Well, good morning, Board members. Welcome to today's regular meeting of the Kentucky Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Certainly, I welcome all of our members and all of those in the audience, including those joining us remotely. To members who are joining us virtually, please ensure that your video is streaming and that you can be seen throughout the duration of the meeting. I do have one note to offer on today's agenda. There will be an additional statement of consideration that's been added to today's agenda during our action and discussion items. The statement is related to 701 KAR 5170E waiver request and will be discussed and presented by our General Counsel, Todd Allen. So now I would like to ask Dr. Jones, please call the roll.
Holly Bloodworth.
Here.
Harold McKinney. Justin Pate.
Here.
Tiffany Payton. Julie Pyle.
Present.
Randy Poe.
Present.
Sharon Porter Robinson.
Here.
Lee Todd.
Here.
Steve Trumbull.
Here.
Diane Woods.
Present.
Lou Young.
Present.
Harper Blake.
Here.
Alfonso de Torres Nunez.
Present.
Secretary Jamie Link.
Here.
And President Aaron Thompson.
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to invite Board members to share some good news. This is a time when we, I noticed that the Board is beaming, beaming broadly and as we hear about some of the good news in education around the state. And Holly, I'll start with you to talk about the educators that we will be honoring next week, the nine Kentucky educators named 2006, awarding the Teacher Achievement Award.
Yes, exciting news. There are nine Kentucky educators named 2026 Teacher Achievement Award winners. The Kentucky Department of Education announced the selection of nine outstanding Kentucky educators as recipients of the 2026 Kentucky Teacher Achievement Awards. These teachers qualify to compete for the 2026 Kentucky Teacher of the Year Award, which will be announced in October. The names of the nine Kentucky Teacher Achievement Award winners and their positions during the 2024-25 school year are shown on the PowerPoint. Melanie Howard of Corbin Primary School in Corbin Independent District, Michelle Bradley of Crossroads Elementary School in Bath County, Susan Coffey of Mount Vernon Elementary School in Rockcaster County represent elementary school teachers. Kimberly Stevenson of Todd County Middle School, Kim Yates of Pineville Elementary School in the Pineville Independent District, and Michelle Gross of Spencer County Middle School represent the middle school educators. And then we have Davina Baker of Perry County Central High School, Careburn Doughty of Mayfield High School in the Mayfield Independent District, and Whitney M. Walker of Lafayette High School in Fayette County represent the high school educators. KDE received 753 teacher nominations this year, a 42% increase from the previous year, and judging was conducted by a blue ribbon panel of veteran educators from across the state. It's a lot of competition, a lot of great teachers in our state. And I've seen a lot of nice things on Facebook and things like schools, like shouting out their teachers. It's been really nice.
Thank you, Chair Robinson. Each year, this is my second year getting into this, of course, I call each one individually before they're announced to let them know. And I do have a funny story I have to share. I won't say which teacher. So I start off by saying hello. This is Dr. Robbie Fletcher, Commissioner of Education, and my response from one of them was, "Shut up." I said, "No, ma'am. This is why I'm calling you." And then I said, "Congratulations, you're one of our Teacher Achievement Award winners." And she said, "Shut up." So we had a great conversation and, you know, talking with each one. It's been wonderful for them to just to hear their stories one-on-one. Of course, I'm not part of the process of selection, but it is a wonderful perk of the job to get to talk to our teachers. And some of the conversations went on for 20, 30 minutes, and it was great. It was a really good opportunity. So I was told shut up twice, though.
I know. I can imagine the reaction. It's like, "Who's calling me?" Oh, goodness. Well, more good news. Randy?
Yes.
Would you tell us about the inaugural Kentucky Transition 360 Institute?
Yes, it was held July 17th through the 19th in Louisville. We convened educators from across the Commonwealth to enhance outcomes for students with disabilities after they leave school. The event featured a whole group sessions and targeted breakout sessions focusing on 23 predictors of student post-second or post-school success illustrated by the National Technical Assistance Center on Transition called the Collaborative. Educators from 14 districts and five area technology centers participated in the inaugural event. So congratulations to them.
Yeah, congratulations to them, KDE, for looking at another transition point for our students and addressing that with intentionality. Diane, you're going to talk about JROTC in this year's awards.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity because if there's any program that we have among the many that support kids, it has to be JROTC. I was at a high school where we began JROTC, and I know the difference, the difference it made in a whole group of kids who we didn't have anything else that was fitting their instructional style as well as their abilities and things that they wanted to do. So that being said, and that wasn't part of the, what I supposed to read, was it? But anyway, whatever. Kentucky Educators honored with JROTC Instructor of the Year Awards. Two Kentucky educators were honored by the U.S. Army Cadet Command 7th Brigade as winners of its 2025 Junior Reserve Officers Training Course Instructor of the Year Competition. The award recognizes outstanding leadership, mentorship, and dedication within the JROTC program. Retired Colonel Mike Stewart, Senior Army Instructor at John Harden High School in Harden County, has been named the 7th Brigade Senior Army Instructor of the Year. Retired Sergeant 1st Class Ashley Wolf, Army Instructor at Henderson County High School, has been named the 7th Brigade Army Instructor of the Year. Congratulations to these officers and the accomplishments that they are making day by day with students. I hope I got the titles correct.
Yes.
My son's in the Navy and he says I mess him up all the time. But anyway, it's from the heart, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Steve, we're going to hear about the Learning Coach recognized nationally.
WKEC Learning Coach recognized nationally for work in positive behavior support. Kayla Jones, a professional learning coach at the Western Kentucky Educational Cooperative, has been named to the Association for Positive Behavior Supports Under 40 to Watch List for our leadership in advancing positive behavior support practices in Kentucky schools. Jones works in the Special Education Regional Technical Assistance Center at WKEC, where she focuses on addressing students' social, emotional, and behavioral needs. Her work includes reporting the implementation of the Positive Behavior Interventions, Sports Framework, and Interconnected Systems Framework. Jones has spent 17 years working in education, so congratulations to Kayla for being recognized for a very worthy cause.
Thank you. Thank you. Justin, you're going to talk about the 2025 Skills USA Championships.
Yes, ma'am. Always proud to talk about Skills USA Championships. This is the national championships, and Kentucky took home several awards during the 2025 championships held in Atlanta back in June 23rd through the 27th. Skills USA is the number one workforce development organization for students. It's the premier showcase of America's most highly skilled career in technical education students. Along with gold, silver, and bronze medallions, competitors may earn scholarships, tools of the trade, and even job offers right there on the competition floor. And Kentucky took 79 students to compete in this national championship.
That is quite impressive. Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Board members, I mean, let's just remind ourselves, I mean, we do this because this is the source of our energy, the source of our reinforcement, and further inspiration for the work ahead. All of this is well worth celebrating because that's where we're going to find the resources necessary to tackle additional challenges so that these students can further, these students and teachers can be supported to even further heights. Another requirement on our agenda is per policy is a time when Board members share and raise issues that may not be included on the agenda but bring up points for further clarification, referral to a committee, or scheduling for future Board review and/or action, if such is the consensus of the Board. And I'm going to ask now if any Board members wish to share. I have some folks I can recruit. I have a few notes on what you've been up to, but it's, I'll leave it to you to volunteer first. Holly?
Okay. Well, I have a couple of things I wanted to just say. First of all, I wanted to thank Greta for connecting me with Ms. Van Bieber at the Kentucky School for the Deaf. One of my students, when we were learning about phonemic awareness and how important that is for laying a groundwork, you know, the foundation for reading, she's like, "Well, if phonemic awareness is so important, how does a deaf child learn to read?" So I contacted Greta. She contacted me with this teacher. We had a Zoom. It was amazing. And, you know, I love that the student was thinking and making those connections, and we all learned a whole lot. So thank you for that. Also, I just attended the Kentucky Reading Association Conference, and Mickey had a wonderful team of people there presenting to Kentucky, people that are interested in literacy across the state. It was really great. So, but one thing that I do want to ask about that just I heard at the conference a couple of different times was, "Why is the website so hard to find anything?" So I think that's, if people are kind of saying that out there, we need to look at that and just see. I think part of it is because they're trying to use the website, you know?
Hallelujah.
Like when you're talking about high-quality instructional resources or internalization protocol, where do you find that on the website? Like, maybe, I don't know, maybe we need to get some teachers on a team to say like, "What kinds of things are you searching for that you can't find?" And make it more teacher-friendly, at least, or things like that. And then just the regional school board meetings. I attended mine in my region and found that always very informative and appreciated the opportunity to go and they always give me a few minutes to speak. So I appreciate being included in that.
So Steve, you attended a regional school board meeting. You want to comment on?
Yeah, I attended one in Martin County, and they did an excellent job in Martin County. And they had set their new high school somewhat three, four years old, probably, and they just, they take a lot of pride in that meeting, and so I really enjoyed being with all the people there in that area, a lot of the Board members and things, and they did an excellent job.
I hope that, you know, we continue to bring feedback and insights and share with the Commissioner as we engage with various constituent groups. Let's see, Diane, Randy, and Julie were at the Continuous Improvement Summit, which I understand was kind of like an amazing source of awe, inspiration, learning. Julie, you care to comment?
Yeah, the, I always enjoy the Continuous Improvement Summit and a couple of reflections from that. One I mentioned yesterday, it was very cool to see districts who were just getting started, like on a portrait of a learner journey. They hadn't even convened their community stakeholders, and they were asking, "How did you go about it? Did you have an application? Did you ask people?" But then also to see how the ones who are advancing and moving along in their journey, the progress from year to year, and they keep coming back and showing, "Okay, this is what we've done next." So just the constant loops of improvement, the continuous improvement that's going on. It was an excellent summit.
It was over 1,000 teachers there. It was amazing help. That conference has grown over time.
Yes.
And supporting those teachers. I think that's the best that I loved of it, is seeing the teachers there, as Julie said. You know, tend to a lot of administrator conferences and things like that, but it's not as exciting when you see all those teachers there because you know they're going back and having a direct impact. The others are too, but a direct impact. And you really love hearing them share their stories about the student hall, as you said, because we're also talking about, a lot of them that are presenting were at this place and they're now at this place, and that's the sharing that we're getting.
Right.
And that goes back to what we talked about with thriving classrooms, because you're sharing what is thriving there. That's what's great about that conference.
So I noted that, and was able to share with the superintendent, that Jacob Elementary in Jefferson County.
Yeah.
Came away with three awards.
Right.
Recognized in three categories of continuous improvement, and he said, "Ooh, thanks for sharing that. You know, there's so much going on." Sometimes the bad news kind of overwhelms the good news, so let's not hold back on sharing the good news with our colleagues. Anyone else?
I was there also, and this was my second year too, but what I enjoy about the conference is the camaraderie. It's not just teachers. There was principals there, assistant superintendents, superintendents. KDE are marvelous staff, who, you know, I'm technologically illiterate, so I always have to call them to help do something. So they've got me registered because I knew I was coming one way or the other. I had to crash the car because I was going to be there.
Crusher.
But it just warms your heart. And I had a young man that I knew when he was teaching in Fayette County, and he said, "You know, you encouraged me a lot." And he's an assistant superintendent in a district now. And that, "Well, you know, I'm getting old, so y'all look at me all crazy like..." But that is, that's what it's about. Bringing, we've got the intelligence, we've got the skill set, we've got the information. So let's put it all together for the good of, we know what's important in our school districts, those young people. So next year, we're going to get you there.
So would you preregister?
I'll go down driver back up.
Commissioner?
To add to the great comments, and again, the sharing, you know, what they, you know, if someone was in this part of the process, they were sharing with others what they learned. And so maybe some pitfalls that can be avoided.
Yeah.
And just to see, and there were some districts, again, a couple of districts there that hadn't even started their profile of a learner, that were taking notes, asking questions, but then also those that were presenting that have gone, have been a part of this process for years, that said, "These are the, this is what we've learned." And I, and that's really what the new accountability model is about. It's about sharing, it's about networking, it's about lifting each other up. So that's one of the, that's one of the key attributes of the new accountability model that I think that this summit really exemplifies.
Thank you.
I have one other thing to share, unless you're finished.
Please.
I mean, I didn't, I didn't, thought your mic was cutting us off there.
I'm watching.
We had the Northern Kentucky Fall convening up our way, and we had, you know, representing 18 school districts and so forth. The Commissioner was there speaking on thriving classrooms. We had the judge executive about thriving communities. We had quotes from Dr. Thompson that we read off on dual credit and different things. So I want to thank everybody that was there because, as you're saying, this, the, and it's focused around the new accountability model that's coming because we have the data there from the state testing and so forth. But then the key is mixing that with the portrait of graduate, and then those districts thinking about what is driving classrooms in theirs. And then they're going to put that, you know, into the portrait of a graduate underneath each of those. So everything that we were kind of discussing on the Continuous Improvement Conference, that's what you're looking for, for the thriving community. So it was very good. Our Board Chair Assistant here, Vice Chair was there, Lou Young.
And Julie.
And Julie was there. Julie was presenting too. I almost forgot that. So Julie was presenting on how you create thriving parents in the community and in the school districts because student engagement, district engagement and teacher and student engagement equals success, and it equals a thriving community.
Thank you.
But we had 180 business representatives, senators there, business people, and administrators, Board members and those, so it was a good turnout.
I'll just riff on Randy's comments. It really was a good event, and Secretary Link, you probably see this, I don't know that anybody has a better commitment to or approach to regional stewardship than Northern Kentucky. So it was really powerful to see the partnerships that were in the room, and I wanted just a point of privilege to say that our own Julie Pyle and her company, Parent Camp, have been selected as one of the U.S. Chamber of Commerce's Small, 100 Small Businesses of the Year. And what I'm so excited about knowing Julie is that it is in the disruptor category. So how cool is that? You have to get a T-shirt. I'm a disruptor or something. Congratulations.
Yeah, I'm heading to DC on Sunday.
DC this week.
So for the, all the best of it. It's pretty cool. Thank you.
Oh, wow.
I have one small thing. There is a NASB membership, member exchange on Monday at 4:00. And keep an eye on those emails because those member exchanges, and there's a lot of great webinars. I think there's one next Thursday on engaging students in civics and being involved actively in civics education. So there's just, NASB's got a lot of great webinars coming up.
Good info. Dr. Todd?
Okay. I received a handwritten note from a student who's in the middle school in Blasky County. Her teacher is in a program to get, I think, 360 hours of training on the Open SAIAD approach to teaching science. She's only had 90 hours up to this point, but this young lady said, "Ms. Wilson, your class is crazy. You don't just teach science, you make us live it like real scientists, just like you always say. I really appreciate how you let us talk, explore, ask questions, and get involved instead of just sitting and listening. You've made learning science feel active and alive, and there's something, that's something I'll always remember. Thank you for being such an amazing teacher. You are a great scientist. Be you." Three exclamation points, and so that was pretty cool. But, you know, as the Commissioner was saying, this Open SAIAD is available, it's free, but unless you have the professional development, how to do that type of teaching, you're not going to do much with it. So this is, shows what can happen.
Which is always an inspiration, right? I mean, to see that. Diane?
Okay, and I'll be quick, I promise. I had the privilege of attending the GEAR Up Celebration of 25 Years of Success, the middle of August, right, almost after our meeting, at the Council of Post-Secondary Education, and it was wonderful. GEAR Up began with 29 schools way back when, 25 years ago, and my school was one of those schools, so it was really good to go back and see, and they had, it was like walking through an exhibit of year by year of the successes that they'd had with these young people. And there were those people there too that we got to talk to from GEAR Up, that we got to talk to some of the students, former and current students, and that was really rewarding. And the second thing was, besides the Continuous Improvement Summit, was All In for Ag.
Ah, yes.
County, Harrison County, home of Cynthia in Kentucky, and they had a program there for all fourth graders that they brought to the fairgrounds, and it dealt with safety in agriculture and in the world, and having a safety plan that you could share with your friends. It was really very good and very rewarding. And I also got to attend the FFA conference that we had. I'm not sure, was that, I'm not sure if that was before or after our last meeting, I think it was right after, down at the Civic Center. And to see all these school buses.
Yeah.
And these kids with their, you know.
Baby blue quarterbacks.
Baby blue and FFA across the back, female and male. Back in the day, females did something else. They didn't work in FFA, they were in FHA, you know? So it's been, it's been a really wonderful summer of learning and camaraderie and seeing more of what's going on. And I just can't get back to the department we have here. No matter what the question is, there's no question that's too dumb, as the people will say to ask them. And just the help, and then with CPE the last time, with GEAR Up and going over there, when I finally found the place. It's not marked very well. The signage is not very good. And I went around a couple of times and was like, "Well, it's got to be in here somewhere." You all know what I'm talking about. So anyway, but, and, you know, we're talking about post-secondary and the links, so I thought that was really good, that we were able to participate and go around and see what's going on. Thank you. I told you I'd be quick.
Yes, Alfonso.
I would also like to share some good news, if that's okay.
Please.
Yeah. So I also had the opportunity to attend on September 13th, the State Conference from the Kentucky Word Language Association. If you check on the screen, this is an example of what turned out from that conference. They say that art is the representation of the mind. This is something that a teacher created as a result of participating in the panel that was focused precisely on vibrant learning and portability of a learner. Miki Ray also participated in the panel, and we had a very good discussion and we had a very good opportunity to share with those teachers what vibrant learning experiences is, what portability of a learner is. And as I shared in my report to you, I truly believe that because of the core nature of the content that they teach, which is performative, and through the use of best instructional practices recommended and supported by research on language acquisition, both in proficiency and intercultural communication, I truly believe that this body of professionals embody what we are trying to pursue in here regarding vibrant learning that matters to our students and allows them to show what they can do in many areas in life, whether you are an engaged citizen, or a productive collaborator, or a critical thinker. Both Miki and myself, we got the opportunity to participate in this panel where we talk about vibrant learning, portability of a learner, what was the big picture, what does the future hold in regarding to these matters. The members of the audience were really participating, as you can see, and there were lots of good questions. A lot of teachers also realized that much of what they are doing, it's already contributing to this. So it was, there was a lot of validation from professionals that usually they are not considered like the main content areas, but they found themselves through that conversation as an important and probably critical part of this matter. My suggestion to the question that you asked me as a result of sharing my report with you, whether they would be willing to collect members' examples of vibrant learning experiences, the answer was precisely that, that they are eager, they are willing to lead the state, they are, they are champions that I honestly believe that we should recruit for this and we should use them to show everybody else the joy of learning, right? As Goldie, Dr. Goldie Muhammad said in his, in her Five Pursuits of Joy of Learning, I strongly encourage the Kentucky Board of Education to use this amazing group of professionals and to show and lead the state in what vibrant learning opportunities and what vibrant learning that matters to students is. So thank you so much for letting me participate and, yes.
Thanks so much for sharing that. I mean, I think we're getting the point. Vibrant learning is all about the pedagogical skills. In this instance, world language happens to be the content, but these, these professionals in that, in that academic area ready to contribute to our store of understanding and collecting those examples of vibrant learning experiences that are available to our students. I'm ever watching our agenda, our timed agenda, if you will, and I am going to take a moment, if you don't mind, to share a perspective that I experienced beginning last month when it was noted, September represented the 50th anniversary of the busing order in Jefferson County. And I have to tell you, that whole thing took me way down memory lane back to 1956. Some of, most of you were not even born.
You weren't even one, Robbie.
You weren't even one. But that was the year my dad escorted me to the entrance. to the entrance of what was then Shawnee Junior High School and High School on the first day of desegregation in the Louisville Independent School District. It didn't involve busing because Louisville didn't provide transportation. Everybody rode, most kids rode the public transportation to school or parents arranged transportation. But it did involve me leaving my friends from Virginia Avenue Elementary School because most of them got to go to a different junior high school. And because of that, I lived on the wrong side of Greenwood Avenue. I got to go to Shawnee. And you know, I tried to make my case with my parents that I should be going with my friends. And they insisted that I had to, I needed to go where I had the opportunity to go, where the system was designed to send me. And that's where I went. It was an extraordinary experience. I encountered teachers who did not expect me to know the King's English, but I had been taught by teachers who insisted I would know the King's English. And grammatical errors were considered like scratching the blackboard. Now, you guys don't even know what a blackboard is. That was an awful experience. But that aside, my next encounter with desegregation and busing was as a graduate student at the University of Kentucky when I was fortunate enough to be placed in the Jefferson County Education Consortium as a research assistant doing documentation for the Assistance Center supporting the DSEG order that also required two school districts to merge at exactly the same time. Talk about putting the rabbit in the br-. I mean, here I am, a graduate student working in a data-rich environment, watching something that had not been done before, certainly in Kentucky and at that time even nationally, requiring the merger. I mean, it happened again, but Kentucky, Louisville experienced it first. And so that's where I spent my graduate school days, rotting the bus with students from the west end to the east end, documenting teachers' needs, documenting our growing awareness of what this was all about. So you know, the busing and the jeering crowds and the trauma of it made headlines because it was headline-worthy. But there was a lot going on that only got documented by teachers who were understanding what their experience was all about and how they were engaging with their students. So I'm going to read a piece from a journal, a book that was, it's an artifact of the DSEG Assistance Center work. It's teacher talk about understanding the importance of their role. And I got to appreciate the trauma that the students experienced. And I got to understand the trauma that teachers experienced as they were going through all of this. I mean, we had to do it. And let me tell you, there was no bank of high-quality instructional resources that could be consulted. We had to create it together, recognizing the needs and bringing people together to share. And they did share. So the story that didn't get told is one that inspires me both in terms of the objective that was being addressed, in terms of the good that can come out of it, particularly as we, as we embrace our own learning. So this little book is a collection, as I said, journal entries from teachers and students, white teachers and black students, to be specific, to kind of give you a sense of what everybody's trying to figure out. This one is called Some Subliminal Second Thoughts. He's in my classroom, but he did not choose to be there. He didn't choose this school, and he didn't choose me as his teacher. He didn't select his father's income, his mother's absence, or his crowded house. He didn't choose to confound my pat curriculum and my pale teaching prescriptions. He didn't choose to value different things than I or to speak a different, albeit more colorful idiom. He just didn't choose. He can't smile nicely when his world tells him to feel anger, nor can he frown away warmth and fair play. His mask is not like mine. He could never comprehend and grasp the gap that separates his mercurial moods from my pale practice rightness. He didn't decide one day to shape his nose, his brow, or his mouth into forms that trigger my discomfort or disdain. He doesn't know that he won't learn if I don't think he can. This is in the 60s, guys. I mean, we're getting it. We're understanding the power of the teacher. Or that my eyes and voice limit his circle of friends. He doesn't know how much his future depends on me, but I know. It's a teacher coming to grips with the power of the profession. I appreciate and share that with you, not as an indictment, but to inspire our determined efforts to support teachers who know the power they have over the future of our students. I appreciate your letting me share that. It's been on my heart. I tell you, the trip down memory lane was long, but it was very, very resourceful and helpful. With that?
Yes.
I just want to add to that. I had the privilege of a board member that was in the situation that you're talking about in the 60s. And I never, it opened my eyes as a superintendent to really look at a different person's point of view. Nothing is eloquent to that, but he was, he was a Kentucky State Police Officer on that bus that was unloading those children that day. And he said that, you know, all these years later, what the country's going through. He didn't choose, as you just said, those things, but he was there to fulfill his duty. And his duty was for all children, not some children. And, and there's pictures, I didn't even realize this, but I went back and saw pictures in the yearbook where he's getting off that bus and getting hammered by citizens with pipes and things like that, having to take kids to school in riot gear. And he never chose that, but he defends that. And that's what our country's about. And those teachers that you said, they made the difference. And we got to continue that fight today.
Teachers are on the front line. And so they stood, they stood on the post. And it was, it wasn't always perfect. But we, we didn't even have a sense of what perfect, all that perfect meant. And I think over time, we have certainly made progress. And I'm inspired to continue. Members, we started a conversation with the EPSB, the Education Professional Standards Board, that continues, that work is continuing. We've adopted a research plan. And today, we're fortunate to have Amber Schnell, the Chair of EPSB, join us virtually. Good morning, Amber.
Good morning, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you for joining us. Could you bring us a report from the EPSB?
I will be glad to. Thank you so much for sharing the information you did about the anniversary of the integration and the busing in Louisville. I am joining you from my second period class here at Madison Middle. And they are watching you on the live stream. So if you two don't care to wave to them real quick, they don't leave.
Good morning.
So we're going to hope and pray that they can follow my instructions to understand that I'm on a live stream with the Board of Education. So, so the Education Professional Standards Board held a virtual meeting on Monday that focused primarily on the closed session review. At the meeting, our two newest members were sworn in. Dr. Elizabeth Dinkins from Bellermin University joins the EPSB to represent the private post-secondary institutions. And Dr. Nicholas Pace of the University of Kentucky joined us to represent public post-secondary institutions. The EPSB's next in-person meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 21st. And at that meeting, the EPSB will review the EPSB and KBE Research Collaborative, which the KBE voted to approve yesterday. EPSB will also finalize our priorities for the 2026 legislative session at that meeting. Today, we've got a couple of materials to share with you. The first is our annual report created by our staff to highlight the work of the EPSB and the Office of Education, Licenseur, and Effectiveness during the 24, 25 school year. The beautiful booklet brochure put together. I'm super proud of the work that our team put into it to describe all of the things that are going on with our team. Next, we have a Mythbusters document focused on teacher licensure exams and combating the myths that are circulating regarding those exams. Vice Chair Fryer and I, which he's out on paternity leave today, or he would have joined in. He welcomed a new baby girl, I believe, on Thursday. We were fortunate enough to attend last month's meeting with the Interim Joint Committee of Education and share both documents with many members of the General Assembly. Two recent items that I believe will be of interest to this board are EPSB's approval of the Amendment to 16KR2020, which is the administrative regulation, setting the standards for certification for occupation-based career and technical education teachers, and the introduction of the educational and the educator preparation provider spotlight at the EPSB in-person meetings. At the August EPSB meeting, OELE staff, along with staff from the Office of Career and Technical Education, presented an amendment to 16KR2020 to recognize Kentucky master licenses in electricity, HAVAC, and plumbing, and exempt candidates from occupation-based certification who hold a Kentucky master license in the area of certification from obtaining an associate degree in that area. The amendment also makes some technical amendments and streamlines the language to better align with the current certification practices. This amendment was approved at the September 8th EPSB meeting and has been filed with the Regulations Complier. At the August meeting, the EPSB also introduced a new standing item under the report of the Chair to highlight the amazing work that is taking place in the educator preparation programs at our Kentucky colleges and universities. Dr. Dinkins from Bellermin University provided the inaugural presentation for the EPP Spotlight, which is available on the KDE media portal. And Kentucky Teacher also published an article covering the presentation. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Amber, thank you so much for that report, that comprehensive report. And it was delightful to come in and see the copy of your annual report that gives a lot of good information. Are there questions and comments, Dr. Yen?
Thank you so much, Amber. It's been a pleasure to be meeting with you and CJ and the OELE team in collaboration between EPSB and KBE. And hello to all of your students in second period. I'm sure they're riveted by this board meeting presentation.
You can quickly say hi.
Hey. I just wanted to call board members' attention to page 11. I think that this is really, this is always the page that causes so much heartburn. But I think it's really interesting to hear about the work of EPSB by the numbers when it comes to misconduct and ethical allegations, complaints, et cetera. So I do think that this perspective helps so much. And I applaud you guys for being willing to just put those hard facts out there, keeping in mind that I think there are 60,000 certified teachers, more or less, in the state of Kentucky. So that perspective, I think, is really helpful. And just one commendation, Amber, to you and your team for taking on that mantle of increased responsibility under 161120 and adding all the extra meetings and devoting the time that you needed to catch up on your docket and get ahead of that. And I know that that's been Herculean effort on the part of you and the EPSB team. So it has not gone unnoticed. So congratulations.
Thank you so much. I think since, I believe it was House Bill 300, I'm sure Cassie is in the audience and correct me if I'm wrong. But since that went into place, we have not had a case dismissed because of those timelines. So prior to that, we met every two months. Now we meet about every three weeks.
That's public service and dedication. We certainly appreciate it. Other comments? I look forward to joining the EPSB on the 21st, is that right? 22nd, and reporting on our board meeting. And we are ready to join you and address our research agenda and drill down on the retention issues that we're facing. So thank you. Thank you, Amber. Have a good day. Bye, guys.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you for joining us. So that will be a regular feature on our agenda. And we're looking forward to really working with the EPSB. Next, I'd like to ask Dr. Thompson if he will bring his report from the EPB. CEP.
CEP.
Good gracious. Sorry. You know what I'm talking about.
Whoever you are.
Finding that acronym is almost as hard as finding my building. Good morning, everybody. Madam Chair, Board, good to be with you today. Several quick things. We sent you just a small report. We're going to target most of our president's report toward the work we're doing together. So that's what this report is about. Madam Chair, I appreciated your conversation around desegregation. Back in the 60s, I was also one of those people in the hills of Kentucky. And I have to tell you about my fourth grade teacher, Ms. Ruby Lois Hibbert, who I just did her eulogy. She was that teacher that protected me in a time of turmoil. And we kept up with each other over the years. Every time I gave a speech, anywhere close, she would come. She was just that teacher. And she asked me to do her eulogy, and I was proud to do that. So there's a lot more to that story than we have time for this morning. But I appreciated you taking the time to tell us that because for those of us who were directly involved, we remember well and still do. And don't want to go back to that time, I'll just say openly. You know, this is, this is a time we need to be thinking about togetherness. Anyway, on with my report. GEAR Up was mentioned. Proud to say, we found out last week, we got that grant. We will be serving our K-12 districts as well. I mean, the districts that we've chosen in the state grant, as well as post-secondary institutions. We feel very proud of it. When I looked at the scores, we had perfect scores. So I'm proud that Kentucky has been doing this since 2000, actually. This is actually my fourth GEAR Up grant I'm the PI on. So I've been engaged in the GEAR Up grant system. But I want to thank Kim Welch, Bruce Brooks, and a lot of the folks who really put the effort into writing this grant. So we're proud to keep serving our partners in K-12. Also, we got some preliminary enrollment numbers yesterday. They're preliminary. We don't get the final ones till sometimes in late November simply because the return to Title IV, we have to wait till all that is over. But once again, we look really good. Kentucky, as you all know, was like the first state to rebound from COVID and post-secondary enrollment. We're proud of that. We're proud of that. And you heard our, and I'll talk in here in a minute, truly about what we're doing with our dual credit, but our dual credit numbers were up tremendously also in addition to all the other numbers. And it looks like we've rebounded with our adult learners. This started last year, and once again, it looks like we're going to be up again. I'm not sure if I reported the last time I reported to this steer group, but we got our success numbers back. Kentucky, once again, is number one in the nation and increase in retention, number one in persistence, number two in completions, and we're proud of that. We also got our debt numbers back, that now only two out of every five of our students in public post-secondary education are graduating with debt, and in the last five years, we've reduced that debt load with those two by 34%. So Kentucky, we are doing the things that needs to be done in the unmet need to make sure that our students are getting in college and being successful once they get there. So happy to report some of those numbers, a lot more numbers to report, but, and we can do that another day if you'd like. But some of the things we're doing together that I just want to talk about, dual credit is just really a highlight. We will get a chance to testify in front of Interim Joint Committee here pretty soon on our dual credit numbers, but just to give you a couple of hints, you know, Kentucky, we were the first state to set this 50% attainment for our dual credit students. In other words, we wanted at least 50% of our high school students being able to have at least one dual credit course before they graduate. Got our numbers back, we're at 46% now, so we're happy with that. And just to give you some success outcomes from our dual credit, if you take a dual credit course, you got a 19% better chance of going to college than if you don't take it. And interesting enough, once you get into college, especially if it looks like you're low income or a student of color, you're actually exceeding those that are in positions that are their cohorts. The other piece, I will say, and once again, happy to say this, that our dual credit students are graduating on time. They're getting a four-year degree. And I should also say that now Kentucky, we're back at a four-year degree again, 4.1 years, as you all know. Forever, we've heard about the six years, so we're proud of where we're going. Some of the other items that we're doing, you know, this is Fast Food Month. As of yesterday, Fast Food is open. In this past year, working with our partners and KDE and Kia and others, GEAR Up, in the middle of this, we were able to get 60% of the students going to college filling out of Fast Food. That's, that's still, that makes it like number 12 in the country, but we still need more because we still left about 58 million federal dollars on the table for especially our lowest income. So we're going to work even harder to increase that. We, if you've seen it, you've seen we're doing a lot of Fast Food awareness stuff. We're doubling down on this early, and we'll continue to do this all the way through the enrollment period. You know, I have to tell you, what we started several years ago with our Kentucky Advising Academy, wow, this is really good. For those who are not familiar with this, you know, we're working with probably 90% of the counselors, high school counselors in Kentucky with our post-secondary folks and talking about what it means to be ready for college and career. You've heard me say more than once, I believe, that that is all about career and our P-12 as well as post-secondary education are just interludes to that career, and how we do that is important, and how we inform all students that they are college material is important, and we're going to double down on that. So when we say college material, we are really talking about post-secondary at some level because data are showing that by 2030, at least 63% of our population will have to have a college credential in order to get a job, and 90% will have to have one to get promoted. Now, that's not necessarily a four-year degree, it could be a workforce certification, Dr. Pace. So there's all kinds of ways to think about this, but we, we have to change our nomenclature around this because it's important. But we are working on apprenticeships and so on. I had a chance to spend a little time at Oxford this year with one of your colleagues and talking about what it means to make sure that we do the things that matter in Kentucky around all those items beyond quote-unquote "high school." We also are happy that our numbers are coming back from our summer bridge program. We were able to make this money to spread out many years when we didn't think we could, and the results are just unbelievable. Many of the students, as you all know, that are in coming out senior years are not prepared fully for college, and the summer bridge programming that we put in place with our districts and post-secondary institutions are working tremendously, and we're, we're very proud of that. There's a lot more to talk about, but I know you've got a lot on your agenda. I do want to thank the Commissioner before I shut up and take questions for coming and talking with our presidents yesterday. It was an important discussion, you know, as we transition from ACT to SAT, there's a lot of work we have to do on this end of the spectrum to make it at least part of the college process. And so thank you, Commissioner, for coming and having that discussion with us. Once again, Madam Chair, I'll shut up and let you folk ask me any questions that you may want to ask, but there's a whole lot more to report on. And since Secretary Langton, audience, I just want to do a shout-out quickly, though, to our SWAT group that the Commissioner is a part of. So is he, so is the Secretary of Labor, I mean, Secretary of Economic Development, Secretary Noel, so is Ashley Watts, President of the Chamber, so is, you know, the President of the Community and Technical College. You know, we are working together to make sure that education, both K-12 and higher ed, really is on the forefront and making sure that our economy keeps growing and keeps building to provide the taxes for things like P-12 education and post-secondary. With that, I will take any questions.
Well, Dr. Thompson, thank you always. You come with the, the good news, the inspiring news, and some provocative questions. I'd love to know more about our moving in the direction of the four-year completion, and do we know what's underneath that? Do we know how to sustain it? Because that's a big cost factor for our students, and getting them into the workforce with their credentials and so forth is important as well. So I do, I hope we can know more about that at some point.
Happy to tell you more, and I know you're not asking me to speak of it now, but it is good policy and good process. I mean, such as got real developmental education back in, in 17 and 18. We did the wraparound services that served all of our students. Well, you know, all of our campuses now have an unmet need metric in which now all of them are, if you go to our campus with Pell eligibility, you're probably going to get your tuition paid for. We have work-ready scholarships. We have really focused on just, you know, all of those pieces, but dual credit is a big one, and that, there's many. I could talk to you for several hours about that, Madam Chair. I won't do that now, obviously, but I would love to be able to talk to you all more in great depth about that.
Well, and Lou has a question about the dual credit.
Yeah. I, poor Glick DeSain is going to start taking me off the odd-numbered month meeting schedule, but I would love to have a CPE session with you and Dr. Ellis and anybody on the dual credit team to help us understand that really pivotal role of dual credit for that transition from high school to post-secondary. I'm looking at the website now. Thank you for the data, and thank you for today's report. It looks very handsome with QR codes and links and everything, so this is really scratching an itch for me, Erin. My one question about dual credit, and this is something we could talk about more as a board, I love all the data, and I love that we have an ambitious goal of at least half of our high school students would take at least one. I'd like to ratchet that up. My question is, thinking back to a CPE report from more than 10 years ago around the purposefulness of dual credit course-taking, and we found at the time, Sue, can't remember her last name, but we found at the time.
Sue Kane.
Yeah. We found at the time that there was a lot of wasted dual credit-taking. So our CTE team is in the room. You know, I work closely with Next Gen at UK on dual credit course-taking, so really thinking about perhaps a goal that we could work and support you around articulating the dual credit model in Kentucky around some real purposefulness toward degree earning. And I know we're thinking at the University of Kentucky and several other places around apprenticeship models for teachers, just as one example, you know, how many CTE pathways we have, the role dual credit can play in what has traditionally been four-year and graduate degree programming. That kind of question would be one that I would love us to explore together.
Happy to. Our latest policy, as you may know, focuses heavily on two items, the attainment number of 50%, which no, no state has ever done this, I just want to throw that in. But the second one is around exactly what you're talking about, that's the alignment. We still have, of course, 10 years ago, we had just only a tiny bit of people taking dual credit. Since 2019, we've increased that by 41%, which is huge, right? As a matter of fact, I'm going to Mississippi to talk about it. But the other piece is important that we still have to work on. We have to do this alignment better because we still have students doing that. New policy says that it has to be gen ed or the technical piece, so it would be in better alignment. But we, what I'd like to see, to make a long story short, is exactly where you're going. I would like for us to be working with our P-12 counterparts and do an alignment all the way through a two-year and a four-year degree, if they want to go that way, so they'll be able to see it, and they'll be able to understand it. Now, I have to throw futurity in this. Futurity is going to be a directional technology here to do that. As a matter of fact, some of the conversation, I hope you're looking at your QR code, because this is the first access summit we've ever had, and we're going to have a lot of K-12 partners with us. We really want to do more than just, and we are doing more with our continuum, just talking about partnerships. We want to put these things in place. And also, I think several of you may come to the NCEE, facilitate a conversation with legislators, presidents, and people of post-secondary as well as our K-12. I think the Commissioner is going to be there. So all of these kinds of conversations, we'd like to actually just not talk about it, but come up with a direction to put it in the policy and put it into what we call a procedure that we can follow even long after I'm gone from.
I appreciate it, and I saw that you invited state board members to that event. I'm sure Diane Woods will be there, so make sure we go ahead and get her registered.
Diane is always there. I'm telling you, she's her gold standard.
Right, when she finds the location.
When she finds out where she's supposed to be. We'll get her there. The other thing I wanted to just comment on was, again, thank you for, like, the website with the data and including all that information, really taking a closer look at dual credit as it unfolds pretty rapidly across the state. And I would just tell you, in our small program, we know already that our high schoolers taking UK courses with UK professors are out achieving our on-campus freshmen. Students who never saw themselves as university-goers or University of Kentucky-goers are being really successful in these courses, and I attribute a lot of that, frankly, to the high school side of the equation, where we have dedicated folks who are supporting students to be successful in a dual credit environment, and then they are, in fact, able to matriculate onto UK and other institutions because they know they can be successful. So the equity of opportunity there does not go unnoticed. Sorry, Dr. Poe.
No, I was just going to say, for Diane's sake there, I tried to do the QR code while we're here in registration, so is there, and there's no way for us to do it unless we all do independently. Can we tell the Commissioner's staff who's going to come and get that registered? Because otherwise, we all got to pull out our credit cards right now to do it and then go for reimbursement and all that wasted time on staff, so can we?
Can you put us on a list?
And I'm happy to have Dawn Off at work with whomever there to kind of do it in a batch. You're right. I mean, that's, it's a lot better, it's a lot better to batch it than.
Yeah. Okay, the other thing I just want to.
So we will, we will just ask our staff to get with your staff and make it happen. So, but knowing that we're welcome is certainly being embraced, Dr. Thompson.
But I, and I can't wait for the preliminary numbers to come, actual numbers there, because as you and I've shared, I mean, we've got a lot of great news that we can't post yet until they become postable. But one thing that we were tracking, it's unofficial from your particular record, and I think it's important for this board to know, because we said this the other day at ours, 72% of the students of poverty that have taken a dual credit course are still in college three years later attaining their degrees, and they're on record to complete within four years. So that is a substantial difference of what dual credit makes. And, and that's based on no matter what grade they actually got in dual credit, because even if they're struggling that first year, they start picking up in their GPA the second and third year because they're learning the opportunities and the transition of learning from high school to post-secondary by taking those courses. So I just commend you because I know that, and a lot of people don't know this, but, you know, dual credit had a tough beginning, and then Dr. Thompson and his leadership and his vision established that dual credit is a way for us of the future and established that so that a student taking one dual credit at one place, it was accepted across the board, and that, to me, is what has really made the difference in dual credit. And I want to thank you for your leadership in it.
Thank you, Dr. Poe.
Dr. Thompson, thank you for joining us with this report that has, again, just kind of galvanized the interest and the helped us kind of shine a light on the very important strategic link we have with CPE, and look forward to following up on several questions that were raised today. Our other essential partner in our efforts to knit the system together and help create pathways to a future for every Kentucky student happens to be the Department of Education and Labor, and Secretary Lang is very faithful in joining us and bringing us a report and really enormously helpful in supporting our efforts to serve these students as well as address the education workforce need. So Secretary Lang, we'd like to receive a report from you.
Thank you for your kind words, Madam Chair, and good morning, everyone. I think our mission is a noble mission, having been on the pre-K for All Advisory Committee and seeing what the impacts of preschool can have, and as Dr. Thompson mentioned, that whole continuum, all the way through high school graduation into post-secondary education or some other career path. It starts early and it continues through that, that whole career or that educational and career pathway. So the Cabinet is fully on board to do everything we can to help the department and CPE and our other fellow cabinets and agencies to, to achieve that goal. From the Cabinet perspective, I think like all of us, we're watching the federal government actions right now to see what happens. There is a significant amount of federal dollars that flow through our Cabinet for many things, from workplace safety to adult education to early childhood. So many areas of our Cabinet are impacted by federal grants. Right now, we're okay, but we hope this doesn't go for very long, and hopefully they'll resolve this in a few days. Like every other state agency, we have gotten our legislation in for review by the Governor's Office, as well as our budget submission was, the deadline was last Tuesday, two days ago. So now we're getting into the, the budget development for the upcoming General Assembly. I mentioned pre-K for all. We're wrapping up the first phase of that. We've conducted five town halls across the state, and now we're in the process of developing a report for the Governor and other leaders to take a look at and to develop a final product that will be submitted to the General Assembly, and hopefully that will be forthcoming very On the unemployment insurance front, I did want to mention a couple of things. First, related to the federal government shutdown, and going back to the beginning of the, the new federal administration, I think we're all aware that there have been some personnel changes with the federal government and their staffing. There are several thousands of federal employees that reside in Kentucky that were impacted by this. that were impacted by this. And we've made a concerted effort to capture that data as those federal employees who have been impacted by layoffs or losing their job, that we capture their unemployment insurance applications. And we share that information with the Kentucky Personnel Cabinet. These are very talented people who find themselves out of work, and the Commonwealth always needs talent. So we're sharing that data with the Personnel Cabinet, and they're directly contacting each of these people that have been impacted to see if they have an interest in coming to work for state government. So in some ways, perhaps the federal government's loss is Kentucky's gain. So we're going to continue to work on that. And also, the, the decades-long effort to get a new unemployment insurance system in Kentucky is moving along on schedule and on budget. And it's an IT project, so I'm really pleasantly surprised that a year and a half in, we're still on schedule and on budget. So that's a really positive thing. And then I'll wrap up. Dr. Thompson mentioned SWOT, and very grateful to him and Dr. Fletcher for their, their partnership and leadership. But we've also expanded the SWOT effort. We now have 10 regional workforce board directors onboard with us. We've added Goodwill Industries as a partner in the overall development of the SWOT initiative. And SWOT, again, stands for the statewide workforce and talent team. And then we're getting a more defined structure to SWOT as it becomes more of an organization, rather than just a group of people meeting and trying to develop an initiative and a program. We're now developing a structure to it so that we can be more efficient in, in our development and delivery of services. And the last thing I'll mention, Dr. Thompson touched on it. There's a group, including Dr. Fletcher, Dr. Thompson, Dr. Quarles, Chamber President Ashley Watts, and Secretary Nolan myself. And I wasn't in the meeting when this happened, but I'm now told that we are affectionately known as the SWAT heads. And I'm not sure how that came about, but I'll.
I'm afraid I gave us that title.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. So we'll blame you for that. But it's, again, the whole philosophy is to communicate and collaborate with so many partners, both public and private sector, because the ultimate goal is to get people the training, the education, and the workforce services they need to, to obtain a successful career. And again, I think that's a very noble mission that we all have. And I appreciate the partnership of, of KDE and CPE and so many other people. So that's my report, Madam Chair.
You know, I'm listening to these reports, and we have yet to hear from the commissioner. You're up next. But I'm thinking one of our odd meeting agendas might be, we might include kind of like collaborations and outcomes. You know, collaborations impact, collaborations, what results are we getting? Because it would really, really help if we were all sheer, aware of the impacts that we're having. Because I'm just hearing stuff that is so impressive and important. And we've got to know what it is that we are going to put ever more precious resources toward in an effort to sustain some of these. I mean, you're plowing new ground and creating really fertile opportunities for us. So let's get strategic about these important collaborations so that we know what to promote, what to support, what to brag about, what to learn more, where we need to learn more, and how we can enrich these partnerships. I hear a lot of good work going on.
And Dr. Thompson told me some good news in his, in his travels to DC and other places with his, his national colleagues. I think, Dr. Thompson, you're hearing that, that SWOT is getting noticed in DC and across the country and what Kentucky's doing to form this collaboration from so many different agencies that perhaps in the past haven't been working as well together as they should. And he's receiving comments. I don't want to speak for you, Dr. Thompson, but you've told me about this.
From lots of places, as a matter of fact, even from the Department of Education, but in other, with granting agencies and a few other folks. They, they've caught on to this idea that, that education and labor, workforce, and economic development are hand in hand. That, that hasn't been the case in Kentucky even. Surely hasn't been in other places. So, yeah, it kind of, lots of news from lots of different places.
Well, you know, lots of folks have talked about it for some time, but getting it done and making it happen, that's, that's another level of effort and commitment and wisdom. So, thank you so much. With that, I'm going to call on the commissioner for even more wisdom.
Thank you, Chair Robinson. And one thing I wanted to mention, I, I'm going to go back to our accountability proposal, model proposal. And one of the key pillars is collaboration. We talk about vibrant learning. We've given great models of vibrant learning. We talk about innovation when it comes to assessments and when it comes to accountability. But we're also, another key pillar in that is the collaboration efforts. We've seen what the, with the NKYEC, with the group in Northern Kentucky, how the collaboration with businesses and with industries and to show what type of vibrant learning is, is possible. That's not only happening, it's, it's good to see that as a regional collaboration, but we're beginning to see more and more of that locally. And now we're modeling that on a state level. And we're learning from each other. It's, to put it simply, we're getting all the arrows moving in the same direction. And then how can we, how can we help each other to achieve those goals? So, again, to have a seat at the table, but also to learn from those that are at the table is something I've enjoyed so much as a part of this. And yes, I'm not exactly sure how SWAT heads came about, Dr. Thompson, until now. So I do want to thank you for that title as we move forward. And maybe we can have a 2.0 version of that title coming up someday. But that being said, again, thank you so much for the, for those, those great reports, gentlemen, and proud to be a part of those. But also too, I'll start off with a, I want to give our, our board members an update on the implementation of our SAT, our college, our Kentucky's College Admissions Exam. And I want to go a few, through a few slides. I did send an email out recently that gave some more details, but this will give you a little bit about where we are now. As you know, our College Admissions Exam, there was a protest that was lodged, and that protest was deemed not to have merit. And so we were able to move forward with our districts and training them on, on the SAT and the administration. So, our very first slide, in the beginning, in 2025 school year, the SAT will serve as Kentucky's official, state-administered college admissions exam, following the competitive bid process that awarded the contract, contract to the College Board. The first cohort affected will be the class of 2027. Harper, so you'll be taking the SAT in the spring. Congratulations. Now, also, some of the things, I want to thank Dr. Thompson, too, when I contacted him to say, okay, how can we partner together to help in this, in this transition with our college presidents? He got me on the agenda very quickly, had a great meeting yesterday, and I want to thank Dr. Thompson for that. Something to keep in mind, this year's seniors took the ACT. So a lot of our districts are still doing those retakes for the ACT for the seniors this year. So you, we in effect have another year of kind of a transition phase, if you will, even though the juniors will take the SAT this year. Some other things to think about is there are those SAT benchmarks that correlate with the ACT benchmarks, but as far as transition readiness, students still can be transition-ready by, with the ACT benchmarks, also along with the SAT benchmarks. So again, it is a new vendor, as you can see, with a transition will provide students with high-quality assessment that continues to support post-secondary readiness. And then, of course, we have linked in there, the benchmark scores that determine academic readiness as established as the Kentucky Council for Post-Secondary Education. So again, CPEs, they actually establish those benchmark scores. And then we can find more information on how the SAT assesses college and career readiness at the link provided. Some more information about the SAT. The SAT is an online adaptive assessment lasting two hours and 14 minutes. It evaluates students in reading and writing and math, and also providing an analysis and science score to meet Kentucky's statutory requirements. Schools will have the flexibility to administer the exam within a six-week window from March 2nd to April 10th. So again, we could have 10 districts taking this on March 2nd, we could have 30 districts on March 3rd. Again, hopefully that's during the weekday. I don't have a calendar in front of me. But that's also going to help our technology team here to provide any type of technical support. Instead of having all 171 districts moving at one time, we can actually look at how can we help districts individually as they move forward in that implementation. So one of the things that I've learned in talking with some other state chiefs, for example, in West Virginia, this, the science assessment serves as their, as their high school science assessment for their state exam, which was also approved by US Ed. Again, the analysis and science score, again, is what they use as part of their science scores as they move forward. Also, too, the contract, you know, as you go through the bid process, the procurement process, and again, this is overseen by the Administration Cabinet. When you look at the procurement process, which began in 2023, started in 2023, and, and it moved throughout, the process got moved over to the Commonwealth Office of Technology, and it became, it went to be from a personal service contract to being required to be a master agreement, which delayed this process another year, if you will. Interim Commissioner Robin Kenny actually negotiated another year with ACT because the ACT contract was for six years. So that moves us into that procurement process. And one of the things that you'll see, the contract itself has a cost of $30 per student for four years and can be extended up to nine years. So from the cost perspective, it's going to save the Commonwealth up to about $350,000 annually and well over $3 million if we go for the full nine-year possibility. Again, it's for four years and we can extend it up to nine years. Also, too, there's a range of resources and training opportunities. This is probably one of the things I'm most excited about. Yes, it saves us on costs, but if you look at the training opportunities and the resources available to parents, there are, there are several that are out there to support educators, families, and students throughout the transition. As you can see on the slide, for educators, it is aligned to our Kentucky academic standards, and there's free instructional planning tools for our educators. There's question banks, student skill insights, resource integrate, to integrate questions into daily lessons. These are things that, that the College Board has come to, with, with part of this program. For parents and students, again, there's easy-to-access scores plus personalized college and planning guidance. There's also guide to help students and families understand the scores. There's also opportunities to connect with colleges and universities as programs through Big Future Application. There's a step, step-to-step guides to help parents support student preparation. And there's also free, yes, free personalized practice resources, including full-length tests, question banks, and exclusive Khan Academy courses. So very thankful for that. Also, too, the SAT and the KDE's Office of Assessment Accountability Staff are providing office hours and in-person trainings. Additional trainings and support will be provided as the process progresses. And as you can see, the administration office hour, first hour is Tuesday, October 14th. And then you, we're also going through each of our co-ops, and you can see the dates. I won't read through all, each of those. But again, there will be additional trainings as we move forward. I've talked to several superintendents and, and you know, and again, there's other transition because we've had districts to use SAT resources. Now they're switching over to SAT resources. We understand that. But most of our, most of, all of the ones I've talked to, they're thankful that this process, that the protest has been resolved and we can move forward. So again, very excited about what the SAT has to offer to our students, to our parents, and then also to the adaptability. I think one of the things that we've mentioned is it is an adaptive assessment. I think it's a multi-stage adaptive assessment. I see Dr. Stafford shaking her head yes. Students will answer so. Harper, pay attention, and I know you are. The first set of questions that you'll get, it'll, what the, will determine what are the next set of questions you get. So instead of just having one form, you'll have, where you just answer all questions as part of one form, you'll answer a packet of questions, and how well you do will determine what's the next packet of questions that you get. So then it'll be able to streamline it and get you into the point where this is my score more quickly. So it is a shorter test, two hours and 14 minutes. You're welcome. But, but again, I think that if you look at that adaptability, you know, if you're struggling in an area, there'll be some questions that will, again, pinpoint that, that for you.
We did all of this for Harper.
Oh, absolutely.
Very thoughtful.
But again, I do want to thank the Office of Assessment Accountability because, you know, when you look at, and also Dr. Kenny, Robin was a, a part of renegotiating and part of this process. But again, after you go from one type of agreement to another, we did not receive a full contract, a fully signed contract till June 25th. And that essentially ended the process. And then we got that information out on June 27th to the board members here, and on to our districts and others on June 30th. But again, the 10 weeks, we're very thankful that that's, we've moved past that, and we're full steam ahead with SAT. Also, too, some other things to bring board members' updates on, and I'll try to answer questions about all this at the end, if you'd like, if you don't mind. I did recently share with the Kentucky's newest superintendents, and I want to thank our staff. We took our leadership team over to SA to meet with all new superintendents so they could see a face with a name. But we went through with the best way to inform their decision-making is to spend time in classrooms and with their students. That's was one of our key messages when we talked to new superintendents. And I took advantage of that advice, traveling to many classrooms and many Kentucky roads. I have to admit, there's a lot of times I'll take the back road to get to a school. I may take the interstate to get there, but if I have time on the way back, I try to take the back roads just to see our beautiful Commonwealth as we go through. And believe me, there's some excellent scenery as we move through, and some great backroads. I'm thankful that I've been in the mountains and I'm under, I can handle those backroads. But again, I really enjoy the scenery that I get to have as, as, and the beautiful, beautiful Commonwealth that we have, I get to see that. But during my school visit, I shared a journey as an educator. I reflected on the challenges, the growth and deep joy that comes with being with our young minds and also shaping those. Also heard from district leaders and educators about vibrant learning, innovation, collaboration, and occurrences across the Commonwealth. As I said yesterday, I try my best to take a story from one area and take it to the next district to share, to see how we can learn from each other. The, I also heard from districts and educators about the vibrant learning, and then many other things. And we also talked about the future of assessment and accountability as we move forward. A lot of excitement about local accountability, even before it's been, even before we asked for the show in legislation. We have a lot of districts that are doing such an excellent job of local accountability and vibrant learning. You can see some pictures here. I think we have Grant County. I think that, judging by the green and yellow, I think that's Rowland County. I have to admit, I do try to dress the colors of the school when I visit a district. So Williams, Williamsburg on the end, I did have my orange and black on that day. So again, I do enjoy that, and I try to be a part of the, of the culture just for at least one day, as in to take it back with me. Also, with the KDE staff, we continue to discuss with district leaders and educators on how to champion the framework of, for future assessment accountability, which has been approved by this board earlier this year. We have ongoing conversations with legislators. Want to thank Dr. Brian Perry for keeping my schedule with legislators. I saw a statistic, Brian, I think we've had over 65 meetings over the past year with legislators, whether individually or in groups.
Slacker.
Well, yes. That was in my evaluation, by the way, slacker. So, so you know. So also want to put, point out that those conversations have been very productive. I'm not saying we always agree, but you threw me way off there.
Sorry.
But again, they are very productive. We've established good relationships, even though we may not agree, there's a mutual respect in each of those meetings, and I do enjoy those. Sometimes I leave scratching my head. I guarantee there's times I leave and legislators are scratching their head. So it's, it's a great opportunity to meet with each one. Also, too, KDE staff are also priding resources, including the recent release of the Local Accountability Design Guide and Toolkit. If you haven't seen that, I highly recommend that you take the opportunity. We, we have districts that are getting into the local accountability work, and they want a pathway. They want to see what it looks like. We actually have published a toolkit. I want to thank Kelly Foster, Dr. Foster and her office and OCIS for the work on that toolkit and publishing that in the first week of September. Again, that's there to help districts develop those local accountability toolkits. This resource provides a step-by-step approach and real-world examples from across the Commonwealth and practical tools to help schools and communities design accountability systems that reflect local priorities and create vibrant learning experiences for every student. Again, models of collaboration, models of vibrant learning as we go through. So also, I will close my comments out with, talking about our state schools and our area technology center, centers. I'll keep these updates brief, but encourage you to review my full report, which is within the, within the. the, within the, your packet, so you can see a full report and see some great pictures, but you'll see some on the screen also too. In the Kentucky School for the Blind, there's big changes are happening for KSB. As Operation Facelift continues during the 2025-2026 school year, Operation Facelift is a comprehensive renovation and improvement plan that will bring major updates to KSB's campus, including refreshed dorms, classrooms, brighter LED lighting, new heating and cooling systems, and improved plumbing and electrical systems. Outside, you'll see landscaping, walkway repairs, and expanded parking. Additional changes, including the bowling alley repair, new greenhouse, and expanded parking lots funded through the KSB Charitable Foundation. On the slideshow you'll see, you'll know, you'll note a couple of enrichment opportunities for KSB students as they take their learning outside the classroom walls, which is so important for all students. In the left, you see the University of Kentucky Teachers of Students with Visual Impairments or TVI program, and their graduate students listen to KSB students give their perspective about being visually impaired. In the right photo, KSB high school students wearing lab coats and goggles observing the science experiment outside in courtyard and with their science teachers. Also for the Kentucky School for the Deaf, in the left photo, the Kentucky School for the Deaf student life staff recently attended the National Student Life, Deaf, and Hard for Hearing Conference at the Florida School for the Deaf in St. Augustine. The experience provided valuable ideas for improving their residential program and further connection with staff from other schools for the deaf. Again, collaboration. And this photo on the right, the Future Deaf Scientist Four Week Program hosted at the University of Kentucky Cancer and Research Center. Again, a phenomenal program, it almost makes me tear up seeing this, provided an exceptional learning experience for our participating students. Students observed surgical procedures, attended medical appointments, participated in art therapy sessions, engaged in laboratory work, and met with deaf professionals working in the medical field. How important is that? This unique opportunity not only expanded their knowledge of medical science, but also inspired them by showcasing successful deaf role models in healthcare. So again, I'd like to thank the University of Kentucky for that opportunity. And from our area technology centers, we could go on and on and on and on about our ATCs, but on the left, you see Clay County ATC is excited to kick off the new school year in a brand-new, state-of-the-art facility made possible by the Clay County Board of Education. Modern learning environment will enhance the current high-quality programs and will open additional doors of opportunity for students. Students are able to receive education and training in high-demand fields such as carpentry, computer science, construction, health science, and welding. On the right, our Wayne County ATC is bringing vibrant, hands-on career exploration directly to elementary students. We talk about introducing this in the elementary level, exploring in the middle level, and then getting students on a pathway at the high school level. That is so important. And again, they don't even have to leave their school building. They're utilizing virtual reality and career view. These immersive experiences introduce young learners to exciting, high-demand career paths, sparking curiosity and ambition at an early age. Chair Robinson, this concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Are there questions, further comments for the commissioner? Yes. I'll find some.
I have a question regarding the SAT. I cannot speak for experience because I have never taken it, but thinking about our multilingual learners, what measures are built within the testing to provide access for our multilingual learners? And not just that, also I'm thinking about our students who are deaf and our students who are blind. And if that has been taken into consideration, what is the plan ahead moving forward?
Okay, I'll have to defer. Dr. Stafford, can you help me out there, please? In reference to the resources for our multilingual learners?
And accommodations.
And accommodations, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As far as our, the SAT offers multiple resources available for diverse learners. We have ability to provide paper. We also have ability to provide Braille large print, as well as accommodations in the online. Dr. Fletcher mentioned that it is an adaptive test, so that means it's an online test. So there is tools within the application itself for accommodations. As far as multilingual learners, there is the ability to have interpret, as we have on all of our assessments.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Stafford, can, do you mind remaining?
Yes.
Just a, a technical question. I assume based on Robbie's comments that we will use cut scores based on the crosswalk from the ACT to the SAT for this spring's round of assessment?
So we'll use the Council on Post-Secondary Education's cut scores that they have established for, for accountability, for inclusion and accountability. Now, I'll note for you that the ACT, or the SAT is used as a college admissions exam. It's not our state test. So we have the Kentucky Summit of Assessment in reading, math, science, social studies for our state test.
But for readiness purposes.
For readiness purposes, the ACT, and we'll use the Council on Post-Secondary Education. And we've had over the years, several students, hundreds of students who have come in with the SAT or have taken the SAT that have utilized the SAT in our accountability system. So it's not new.
I thought that was the case.
Yes.
So I just, one short follow-up, and I, this is imaginary, so don't even feel like you have to answer it, but as I play it out, if things were to go really badly in the spring with the SAT, because we just weren't ready for that, I suppose there, we will have safety nets, we'll have a lot of discretion in terms of how to help districts figure out what to do in the transition since they've had so little lead time to get ready for the spring. I think about high schools that I know that have used AC test prep materials over the years, a lot of tutoring and additional supports for students that they, you know, are just behind the eight ball to be able to get ready for the spring. So I guess I'm asking, we'll, we'll be committed to holding districts harmless as they make the transition to the greatest extent possible?
So again, the college admissions exam is part of the transition readiness.
Right, so there are really not a lot of dangers, not a lot of threats.
That's right, because there are a multitude of ways to demonstrate readiness for, for the students. So you have lots of opportunities through dual credit, through advanced placement exams, through our, all of our career. Yes, all of our career opportunities as well to demonstrate readiness.
Thank you. I was just looking for a little comfort.
Yes.
Well, I mean, we are in an era where ACT, SAT, I mean, they still exist, they're still being used to a great extent, but they're not quite the screens that they used to be. I mean, it used to be that it was almost a barrier. Now we're using them in much more nuanced ways to support other systems.
Test optional universities.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I'm thinking about, I mean, the test optional university list, that universe is getting bigger every year, but it doesn't mean we don't use the test. It's just that, you know, in the days when admission met going down the test score list based on, you know, in rank order and drawing the line at the point where you had capacity, and that was it. I mean, those days are, I mean, fortunately, I mean, it's like we, we've got so many more ways to support students, but Randy, I know you wanted to speak on this.
Well, yeah, I, I guess that there are supports, I don't disagree with that, but I, I'll disagree with the fact that it is not dangerous for some of the districts because being that superintendent who built a curriculum around the fact of subset standard scores of different things, what I would like to see, I guess, before this test, or at least for those that report out on the ACT and have been for a different local accountability measure for over years, that that crosswalk document is published to them so that they can prepare their communities, because their communities are going to be the ones that's there, looking at where they were in the past, looking where they are now, and not having a clue with these things. So if a district can have that, my 24 to 27 subset skills on ACT, which is the top 25% that's been utilized for college admissions for years before Dr. Thompson made them test-optical, but when you're leaving Kentucky to another state, those still aren't test-optional states. So I want those counselors to be able to report if a 24 was here, here's what the 24 means over here, here's what a 28 means, and here's what it means over here, so we can have that document that I can publish. So if I'm a Beechwood or Fort Thomas who's really invested in the ACT over time to their communities, because that's all their communities, I'm sorry, don't care about the state test scores. They care about what those kids are getting on that ACT. So for those individuals, we want to be able to say, this is comparable to this.
And I'll, I'll add to that. That's one of the, in our meeting yesterday with Dr. Thompson, we were setting up, Dr. Mandell, this is going to be, if she hasn't already, is contacting Dr. Stafford to make sure that we have those crosswalk documents so that we can get those out so people can see, this is what this score means. So I agree with you, Randy.
Yeah. And the other thing I'm just going to point out, and we talked about it yesterday, so we don't have to talk about it, but I'm really, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull my Lee Todd out, and I just, I really am concerned about science, and I know we're going to hear about it and so forth. So until that time, there's a lot of people that's got questions, so whatever we can do in educating us of how you can extrapolate a science score without taking science, I really want to hear that, because I think, as Dr. Todd has said, I know that in our areas, we really used different opportunities to report how well our kids were doing in science, and the ACT was one of those. And there's a lot of people, whether other states do it and the Department of Education does it, that they're not going to believe a science score that's been extrapolated from mathematics and social studies and language arts until we get really educated on that. And I'm one of those naysayers right now, so I need to really be educated on how you can do a science score from three different tests. Maybe we can get skills out of it, but I don't know how you're going to extrapolate a science score. So that's, we got to really educate our public on that.
Harper?
Another thing about the science scores coming from the math and English tests, I'm wondering how that will affect the equivalence of the scores from ACT to SAT, because I know, me personally, because the ACT had the four different categories, I'll be completely honest, science was what drug me down. I would get really almost perfect scores in English reading and better scores in math, and then I'm just not a great science student, I guess, that would be what drug me down. So I'm wondering how that's going to translate, if my SAT score is going to be significantly better than my ACT score? And on the other hand, if there is a student that is really good at science and that's what brought them up, are they not going to be well-represented because their scores are coming from math and English tests, which they might not be as good at?
Sure, and I can address some of that. So science is critical to success for our students, both when, in the classroom, in their careers, and in post-secondary. And so with that said, the SAT, they do utilize the reading and writing and the math to provide an analysis of science score. And so with that, in the English and the writing section, there are passages that the students then will use their critical thinking, problem-solving, and application of science skills and those concepts that would be generally utilized in a science classroom. Similarly, for math, they use items that are, have application of scientific processes, such as extracting, extrapolating data, looking at hypothesis, looking at interpretations and then outcomes for that. So we can come back, I think, in early on one of your work sessions, and I'll provide more information around that, as well as possible, some items that would demonstrate how those science concepts are then utilized. So be happy to do that and look forward to the conversation.
And I believe you will educate us, it's just until you do, there's a lot of people with those same questions sitting out there.
And, and it's new, like, it's a transition to something that we've done for years into a new era of.
I was going to punctuate that same point. As long as I've been in this game, Kentucky's been an ACT test, including in 1937 when I took the ACT at a high school. So it is a big deal. And I mean, I understand completely the processes that got us here, I understand how the bid, contract processes work, and the scores of content versus scores of cost and all of those things. So I know why we're here, and I, you know, respect the rule of law when it comes to making the decisions, but I do think it's really important that we acknowledge that Kentucky's been an ACT state for generations. So making that shift and thinking about Randy's comments about the public better understanding the SAT as we move away from the ACT, I think is an important consideration. And I know you guys, this is what you've been handed, and this is what we're doing as we move forward, but yeah, an all-out communications campaign makes a lot of sense to me for those reasons that you guys have identified.
Yeah, and to add, you know, the, the trainings have been so important, and able to move forward, again, we were in a holding pattern, we've been working with the SAT to have these, this type of information ready to go, and now that we've gotten the protests moved, then we can move forward with that. But, you know, as a matter of fact, to take us down memory lane, what was it, 2000, I want to say mid-2000s, ACT was actually written into law. It was ACT.
By name, yeah.
By name. And then it was around 2018, maybe?
About 2015, we went to the General Assembly.
Yeah, and then it was switched over to a college admissions exam, and actually went through this process, a procurement process, back at that time, and ACT won the procurement process. So it was the same, it was still, again, something that went through model procurement, it was a part of that process, and then ACT won that process. Fast forward, going through the process, again, this is where we are, but I agree, the, the key there is, how do we get this information to our parents and to our students, and how do they understand that? That's something that we'll focus in on and move forward, and also to bring that information back to the board. But Dr. Stafford, I want to say thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'm going to say, I will bet on the KDE team to get it done, and to get it done in a way that best supports our students and the families that are so, that depend on this, on this resource, it's a great resource, until there's change, and then it becomes a bit destabilizing, but we're going to set it straight. So, board members, I'd like to move to the.
I guess I'd like to make one more statement. There is a difference, I mean, we're, we're acting like the ACT and the SAT is not different, but we've got to also clarify that they are different. They're a different structured test, and one tests some different skills than another one does. So that is a, I just want to point out there that it, you know, we can't gloss over that, I mean, it's a fear of loss is the fear of change, but at the same time, they are two different tests. And, and just as you said, one's adaptive and one is not. So we can't just, I mean, we've got a, we're talking about the concerns, we just got to realize that this is a major change for our people, and we don't want to just gloss over and act like it's the same similar test. It's going to be a difficult transition.
Well, I'll say this, Dr. Powell, one of the things I've mentioned to people, I said, you know.
And I'll just say, the reason why I know that, I sat on both boards, okay, ACT board and SAT board, and there are different conversations in those boardrooms. So I'm just saying, they're different tests.
And to comment on how big of a decision this is, I've told people, I said, regardless of what happens with local accountability, I may be remembered as the commissioner when we switch from ACT to SAT. That may be the only thing people remember. So again, hopefully it's not, but that's how big of a decision this is, we understand that.
I agree. Quick question, Matt Ross, apologies before I was putting you on the spot, but I'm delighted to hear about Operation Facelift. Over what period of time will we be accomplishing these big renovations and improvements at KSB?
So it's ongoing effort. We've gotten pool money in the last few months.
Nice, yeah.
The general family has had very time to generate.
That's great.
Hopefully that'll continue to make updates, but it's like, you know, six-year capital project.
Six-year, okay, great. Thanks.
So I'm going to move us on to the action discussion items. These are, and I also want to encourage continued conversation with the commissioner about issues and concerns, because knowing how to address those will help us inform, will inform how we support the transition. So this is not the end of the conversation, but the beginning of our transition. So this is not the end of the conversation, but the beginning of our transition. I guess we will, I guess I'm going to ask our General Counsel, Todd Allen, to come to the table and present an action regarding 701 KAR 5170E Statement of Consideration.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So if you will recall, at the board's August meeting, you all approved an emergency administrative regulation at that point in time related to the new waiver process. You actually approved two regulations, an emergency regulation that would become effective immediately upon us filing so that we could process those, and then an ordinary regulation that will become effective in about seven to nine months after it was filed. The comment periods are different for emergency administrative regulations versus ordinary regulations. The comment period for an emergency regulation is 30 days. So it closed on September 30th, and we received a comment on September 30th just a few days ago. And we have prepared a Statement of Consideration for the board's consideration. We have to file that this month. We can't defer a Statement of Consideration for an emergency administrative regulation. So in your portal, I believe you should have, is that correct?
Yes.
The Statement of Consideration for Review. Can you pull it up on the screen?
Which reg number, Todd?
701.
KAR 517, yeah.
5170E. And if you scroll to the bottom of that Word document, the Statement of Consideration appears as the last attachment, or I shouldn't say attachment, the last portion of that, and it goes through all of the provisions of the comment that we received. The one comment that we received was from Kentucky Protection and Advocacy. That is a group that's required by federal law in all states, and their role is an oversight role on behalf of individuals with disabilities throughout the state. So that is the premise of their comments, is protecting individuals with disabilities in Kentucky schools. So the first portion of the comment there, you will see the commenter asked that we consider in the technical review phase. Glibtisane, can you zoom in on it just a little bit so I can see the language? That we, thank you, that we insert into the technical review.
This is page 18.
A provision that we would deny regulations that would potentially lead to adverse impacts for students. Our response is, we declined to make any change at the technical review stage. We didn't feel like that was the appropriate stage. That's more of a substantive review, so we didn't feel like that should be in technical review. Number two there. So once again, the potential adverse impact at the substantive review stage, they wanted us to insert language related to that. We declined to make that change because we thought that it was already incorporated into the language that existed. The standard for granting a waiver under the statute is the impact on students. The board has to consider that in all of the waivers that it grants, so we thought that was already there. And there's already a provision in the regulation that requires school districts to anticipate adverse impacts to students and how they're going to address any of those. So we didn't think that any change was necessary based on that. Number three, there, the commenter asked that we include some language in the forms incorporated by reference specifically related to student civil rights, and we agreed that that would be an appropriate change to make. So in the forms that are in your portal, there are two of the forms incorporated by reference. We have added a phrase in there that school districts, when they sign the form, recognize and agrees that any waiver granted pursuant to the request shall not be implemented in a way that violates, diminishes, or adversely impacts the civil rights of any student. That's really, doesn't change anything. That was already the case, but it clarifies that for the requester. And then finally, the commenter indicated that the most important thing for them was that there be some recognition that the regulation on physical restraint and seclusion was recognized as one related to health and safety that the board would not waive. We didn't need to make any change to the regulation as a result of that, but we do recognize that, that the physical restraint and seclusion regulation is of course related to health and safety, but we need not spell out every single regulation or statute that is related to health or safety.
If none, I would ask, thank you, Todd, for presenting this item. I'd ask the board for a motion to approve the Statement of Consideration for 701 KAR 5170E waiver request. Is there such a motion?
There's some.
Thank you, Todd. Is there a second? Any further comment, question? I'll call the question. All in favor of approving, pardon me, the Statement of Consideration, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Todd, what's the process for responding to commenters?
It's the Statement of Consideration. They'll get a copy of it.
Okay.
Now that you all have approved it, everyone who, there's only one comment that we received, but if there were multiple, they would all get a copy of the Statement of Consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. The board will now consider several other regulations for action or discussion on today's agenda. These items were also reviewed by the local superintendent's advisory council, and a letter from Chair Kirk Bickusstaff regarding the council's review was provided to members on the portal in advance of today's meeting. Our first item, for our first item, we will hear from KDE's Office of Teaching and Learning regarding proposed amendments to 704 KAR 8020, Required Academic Standards for Reading and Writing.
I want to share with members of KDE, Commissioner Fletcher. Just briefly. Can you all hear me okay? Yes, just briefly relative to the transition from ACT to SAT, the Office of Teaching and Learning, and I, in my capacity as deputy, has worked closely with Dr. Stafford and OAA. And I'll just mention one thing as a question raised by the board member regarding accommodations. The standard accommodations that existed for ACT and existed for state assessments do exist for the SAT, whether it's for our students who are deaf or hard of hearing or multilingual. Those common accommodations do exist and will carry over for the SAT. The issue before the board here is to take action on the proposed amendments to 704 KAR 8:020, Required Academic Standards for Reading and Writing. The OTL team will briefly discuss the process of reviewing standards with an eye on the alignment of corresponding assessments for possible revision or replacement every six years. And as Madam Chair mentioned, we talked about the business with LSAC. And one of the things we shared with LSAC very briefly during our meeting was that whole bit of alignment, ensuring that the taught, the written, and the assessed curriculum are all fully aligned. And I can brag on this team here all day long, their process of helping, not only the process of standards revision here at the Kentucky Department of Education, but the process that can be used with our LEAs to revise curriculum at the local level is fantastic. I wish 20-some years ago when I was doing this work, I tease Mickey all the time, that I had these resources in place. So if our LEAs were to follow this framework that you're about to hear, that process will be made very easily. And then the last thing I'll mention, I know we have at least two professors, or three professors, counting Commissioner Fletcher, well, Board Member Holly Bloodworth, and then if I'm missing any other professors up here. If you've done any work with curriculum instruction, you know that the late Professor Alan Gladhorn, who wrote the standard for standards-based curriculum review, he would love this team right here, would absolutely love this team. I had an opportunity, I won't say how many years ago, to work with him and learn some of his wisdom. And he would just love this team here. And I just hope the board, and I know the commissioner, are all happy with the work of this team. Now I'll turn it over to Mickey.
Thank you so much. Well, good morning, Chair Robinson, Vice Chair Yon, Commissioner, members of the board. My name is Mickey Marinelli. I serve as Chief Academic Officer. And with me today at the table is Crystal Rowland. She is the Director of the Division of Program Standards, and her team facilitates the process of standards review. So you will have the joy of seeing her quite often as that is on a six-year rotation. I'm also joined by Sarah Medley, who is the Policy Advisor for the Office of Teaching and Learning, and worked with our Office of Legal Services to prepare the regulation that's before you today. So I want to begin just by grounding us in the guiding statute. So 158.6453 is the statute that requires the six-year cycle for standards review. And what we're bringing forward today specifically is 704 KAR 8020, which is the Required Academic Standards for Reading and Writing. So this was actually one of the first content areas to undergo standards review after the passage of Senate Bill 1 of 2017, and they were approved originally in 2019. And so here we are again with a new document incorporated by reference for reading and writing. On the next slide, you'll see just some guiding language in 158.6453. And I'm not going to read this to you, but I do want you to know that the advisory panel and the review committee, they know this language, they ground the process in this language, and they come back to it often to ensure that they are meeting the intent of that legislation. But I'm going to turn it over to Crystal now to really get into the heart of what we are bringing forward to you today.
Thank you, Mickey. As Mickey mentioned, 6453, that KRS really explains the process for the standards and assessment review. And so we've summarized it here in our little graphic that we use, and we anchor our standards writers in that as well. But we are in that final row at the bottom. We just presented the process that was carried out to the Standards and Assessment Process Review Committee. That committee is established in KRS 158.6453 for the sole purpose of looking at the activities of the review committees and ensuring that it is sufficient under the law. And so they did determine for reading and writing that those activities were sufficient under the law, and we are bringing them, the draft forward to you today to round out that process for approval. On the next slide, you'll see the activities that took place for the review and revision of the reading and writing standards. And it began in October of last year when we sent out a call for teacher writers to apply to be on the advisory panels and review committees, along with a, the survey on our current academic standards for reading and writing. Following that, in January, the committees came together to review the public comment and recommend the changes to standards. February through early March, those changes were released for a 30-day public comment period, along with the assessment blueprint, which is also included in that statute. And then in March, the committees reviewed that final round of feedback and made their final recommended changes that are reflected in the draft that you see today. I'd like to highlight some of the highlights from the writer's vision statement. It's on page six. The full statement is on page six of the draft. But just some things that we would elevate is that the standards writers envision standards that support evidence-based practices and that, that are grounded in grade-level learning. So the vision recognizes that reading and responding to complex texts are integral components of every K-12 classroom and provide access to rigorous grade-level content. Reading comprehension is both a process and a product for developing both oral language and reading abilities, and vertical alignment of standards reflect coherence, evidence-based practices that emphasize reflective and expressive language. On the next slide, we'll see some of the initial public comment. That period yielded 308 responses from a variety of stakeholders. Respondents could give feedback on the document as a whole or standard by standard. For each standard, they could select to keep as is or revise. And if they selected revise, they could give us more information. So what is your recommendation? What change would you like to see? Any reasoning or suggestions there? Overwhelmingly, respondents selected to keep as is for our standards. So there were 95% of standards at K-5, 97% at middle school, and 95% at high school, where respondents selected keep as is. So in total, 12% of standards were revised during this process. On the next slide, you'll see some revisions of note, some highlights. So the survey indicated themes around just a desire for better attunement to science of reading and current research in reading. So revisions to foundational skills point to decodable text and the importance of encoding and decoding or spelling and reading. A standard 10 for K-12 for reading literature and reading informational text emphasizes the importance of both knowledge and strategies for reading comprehension. As we discussed, the writer's vision statement was updated, and the document itself was updated just to enhance usability. One feature, the interdisciplinary literacy practices that are in our current standards are maintained in the draft standards. In the current version, those are listed on each page, and at the time, those were new, and we really wanted to point to those importance. With the revision, we have updated the graphic, but we have included those at the grade-level overview and removed that redundancy on each page, which was actually able to reduce the document itself by about 24%. So the recommended changes were sent out for another 30-day public comment period, and we received over 400 responses during that time. No new standards were flagged for review at that time. And as I mentioned, the assessment blueprint was also released during that period. So when the committees came back together, they reviewed that second round of public feedback and made those final recommended changes to the draft, as well as to the assessment blueprint. Each standard appears, as seen as the example here on the screen, which is very similar to our current, but just a very more streamlined view. So I think teachers are going to find that as an easy transition to the new document. So at the top, there's the strand, grade level, and the standard number. Then there is the guiding principle, which reflects the greater goal by the end of graduation for our students. The progression places the main standard in the middle, the matching standard for the preceding grade to the left, and the one at the next grade level to the right. And the dimensionality of the standard is included just to support teacher clarity. I would like to say before we open for comments and questions, just our deep appreciation on the part of the department, as well as my division here in the Office of Teaching and Learning. For the teacher standards writers, it is a huge commitment of work, and they do step away from their classrooms, and in many cases, away from their families for a period of time to do this work. We have regional representations of teacher writers from across the state, and so to bring them all in the same location, they are having to step away from their lives to really prioritize this work. And so we just appreciate their commitment. It is very weighty work. I also want to say a huge thank you to principals and superintendents to arrange for our teachers to be away from the classroom. We couldn't do this work without teachers that are front and center with standards and students every single day. They are so critical, and we know that is challenging to have teachers away from the building. We just appreciate them making that happen for, for this process. And so we'll entertain questions, comments that you may have about our standards.
Yes, I have a question. How well do the HQIRs align with the standards?
All right. Well, currently, our standards are about 80% aligned to HQIR, which is really fantastic. And with the revisions, those updates brought us in alignment with science of reading and much of what teachers are learning about through letters and other professional learning opportunities, and that alignment is still maintained. So I think what we're going to see is standards that are current to where we are and easy to implement with the resources that they currently have.
So as schools are working with the HQIRs, I mean, are they needing to go through and check for themselves that it's all aligned? Or are they pretty assured that it is aligned? And if there are gaps, are we telling them where those are in connection with the, like, green-rated?
So if it is on our. So if it is on our approved list, again, they can have the confidence that there is that 80% alignment. But in our guidance around the process, we do ask folks as they're going through that first year of implementation, to make sure when they are working on unit internalization, lesson internalization, that they are noting where there are gaps within the standards. One thing I'm especially excited about, though, so with the passage of Senate Bill 207, those sections 11 through 29 will allow us to work with a partner to build out a repository. And one of the things that I want to establish as an expectation with that partner is that if a publisher is going to have a resource within the repository, they provide an explicit crosswalk for schools and districts, so that they'll know going into that adoption where the standards progressions are, where the gaps are, so they can make the most informed decision possible. But as of right now, they can know that there is at least 80% alignment. Many of them have a greater alignment to our standards, but we want to do better in that area. And I think the repository will allow us to do so.
One other quick alignment question. I think it's similar. Once the new standards are approved and the Assessment Blueprint changes have been made, how much of a lag is there between the time that the Assessment Blueprint changes and questions aligned to the new standards appear on State testing?
I will say, in the law, it's required within two years of the completion of the process.
Okay.
Thank you very much. It's a very impressive process, producing a really impressive now system, our way to organize our work in this regard. I'm going to ask the board, please, to offer a motion to approve the amendment to 704-KAR-802O, the Required Academic Standards for Reading and Writing. Is there such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
Second.
Holly, thank you so much. I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you so much, team, for bringing this impressive proposal to our attention. Next, we are here from representatives from the Office of Special Education and Early Learning regarding proposed amendments to 704-KAR-3410, preschool education programs for four-year-olds. We will... Team, please introduce yourselves.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Greta Hilton. I serve as the Associate in the Office of Special Education and Early Learning. And with me, I have Melody Cooper, who is the Policy Advisor in OSIL, as well as Dr. Thomas Williams, who serves as the Administrator of the Preschool Unit. And so before you today, you have 704-KAR-3410. And this is the regulation that establishes the criteria for the implementation of preschool programs in Kentucky. This reg has not been updated in a number of years, and so we're taking this opportunity to put it before you for recertification, and to also avoid expiration. But to clear up some language, we've added some substantive information to the regulation. And Melody's going to walk us through that. And we've also modernized the language. So I'm going to turn it over to Melody, and she's going to walk you through the changes within the regulation.
Good morning, everyone. As Dr. Hilton said, we're amending this regulation to avoid expiration. And I'm going to try to go through these changes as quickly as possible with you. It is a pretty hefty regulation, so just feel free to stop us along the way if you have any questions. So there in the beginning, just a little bit of updated wording, replacing "at risk" with "who are at risk of educational failure" to align it with the preschool statute. That's the wording that's in the statute there. So under Section 1 definitions, you'll notice that we replaced daycare with childcare to update to the Cabinet for Health and Family Services language that they use. And we're also going to use their definition of childcare. We're adding the definitions for evidence-based and paraprofessional, as we're going to be using those throughout the regulation. We've also updated screening to clarify that this would not be an initial, this would not be considered an initial evaluation to determine if a child is a child with a disability. Onto Section 2, eligibility. We, and I'm not sure if it was updated. So there was a date change. Children must be four by August 1st instead of October 1st, and that change was made in statute a few years ago. The other thing that we updated is we added the category to be anything that's required to the extent that it's required by the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. And so that covers children who are currently eligible under the McKinney-Vento Act, and any others that could possibly be added to that in the future. We're also giving the districts a little bit more time to determine eligibility before the next school year starts, so we're changing that from four months to six months in advance. In Section 4, moving on to inter-agency agreements, we were removing a couple of items that are difficult for districts to track and monitor, and then clarifying some language about what is required as far as curriculum goes, what's required by Section 189 of the Kentucky Constitution. So just clarifying that language there. Section 5, enrollment, this is where, this is more of a kind of a technical update kind of section, so just modernizing some language. And then some of those documents that are required for school enrollment already, we're just going to go ahead and align to everything that's currently in statute for all Kentucky school students. And then we're also clarifying that daily attendance records will be maintained in the statewide student information system, so Infinite Campus. And then we are adding an option for districts, a little bit of flexibility here around students and families who really become disengaged with the program. There's some language in there that would allow for students who are only eligible as at-risk, that if there are a certain number of days that they've not been in attendance in the program, that they're still to maintain those requirements of trying to reach out and engage the family. But if those attempts are unsuccessful, or if just the parent or guardian consents, that they can go ahead and unenroll the child, but eligibility is still maintained. So if the student were to come back that school year, their eligibility would still be maintained. Any questions on that? Okay. So moving on to Section 6, Program Operation, we've added another option for the program, so it would be a four-day-a-week full day, with that fifth day reserved for services to family and children. We're also adding a little bit of wording in there, just to clarify what things could be done during that fifth-day option, clarifying that the Commissioner of Education is the one who approves a locally-designed program, and that approval shall be done before the initial implementation and anytime it's amended. In subsection 2 there, again, it's just sort of some updated language. Adequate time to be allowed between sessions instead of before each session. That'll give more districts' choice in the teacher's start time. And we're adding language about staff break times regarding classified and certified staff, so that that will align to current statute and requirements that are already in place. Again, just, this is just some updated language here about the half-day classroom. So the next change, we're not changing anything about the ratio size right now. We're just taking a couple of things that are already required and grouping them together into a written policy. So that's in subsection 5 there. As we move on to subsection 7, this is going to also allow some flexibility for districts and for families. So we're changing that wording from parental involvement to family involvement, and then adding an option for family visits instead of required home visits, so that if there's a secondary location that they want to meet, you know, some families don't want staff coming into the home, or there's reasons that they, for medical reasons, that they wouldn't want that to happen. So it also allows virtual visits if requested by the family. All right, moving on. This is talking about the Valid and Reliable Child Development Tool Screener. So we're just adding that those screeners that are given within 30 days will be valid and reliable, taking out a few of that language that would be redundant with implementing a valid and reliable screener, and then still requiring that it be, those results be shared with the family, along with any recommended next steps based on those results.
So Melody, does this section change the screeners that we're currently using? Does it, like, eliminate any of those options?
We don't have the data on which ones are being used right now, but we do not foresee this being terribly impactful for districts as far as what tools they're using. They already use these, you know, to determine if next steps would be needed for children. So we feel like, you know, they're using valid and reliable. We're just going to go ahead and memorialize it here in the regulation.
Thank you.
Any other questions there? Okay. So we'll move on to Section 7. You'll see a good little bit that struck there. That's just redundant information that we found throughout the regulation. Like I said, this is a rather hefty regulation, so anytime we could streamline language, we were trying to do that. We added a new Section 7 called Learning Environment, just to break up that section that was formerly so huge. So a lot of it's the same content, it's just in a new, it's been newly named. We are adding that districts will integrate an evidence-based social and emotional supplemental curriculum. We're also updating a little bit of language, cognitive skills instead of intellectual skills. And one of the changes here is adding that curriculum shall be evidence-based and aligned with the domains of Kentucky's early childhood standards. So those will be materials incorporated by reference. That was also included in your packet, so that you could look at those standards if you need to. Adding some opportunities, and just, you know, making sure that we've got language in there about developmentally appropriate instruction and routines that are built around the foundational skills for literacy and numeracy for children in the preschool programs. And then a couple of things just about the balance of daily activities for play-based activities and free-choice center work. All right, so moving on to, these were renumbered, so it's now subsection 4 there. Just some updated language there, really not anything that's a substantial change. For center areas, we updated some of that language, too, to go with what's currently used in classrooms, adding that a technology center will be included, and then giving some parameters around the technology centers and screen time for the children this age. The assessments, we're also adding that assessments will be valid and reliable assessments, and used to inform parents, just based on that updated language there. So that part about updating parents is not changed, just modernized the language a little bit. Any questions from that section?
Some of the strikeouts at the bottom of page 12, are those captured in other places? I mean, I think I understand why we have to strike having staff and program resources reflective of the racial and ethnic population of the children in the program, but there seems to be, there are other elements there that we don't want to lose.
Yes, they are. When we, if we struck some of those things, it means that it was just redundant and covered in other places in the regulation.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so moving on to the section on Personnel, which is now Section 8. So there are still some of those, what we call grandfathered teachers, that were in place as lead teachers before the certification requirements took effect. And so we're updating that language, first of all, just to align that now, you know, beginning with the 2002, 2003 school year, the person needs to hold a certificate in accordance with KAR Chapter 16, so all of those under EPSB. And then you'll see a good bit that has been taken out. We're not impacting districts as far as those grandfathered teachers who can still stay employed as long as they've been employed since before that took effect. But this was an old process that can no longer be used, that that process cannot be requested anymore since it was so old. So that's why that whole big chunk is deleted there. And then also, that part about the preschool associate teachers, too, is just, it's not in line with the KAR Chapter 16. So it's just outdated that we cannot use that process anymore. And then we added language to clarify that any of those lead teachers that we would consider grandfathered, so if they were employed pursuant to those other sections about being grandfathered in, that they would not serve as lead teachers in any district after their initial appointment is terminated. And that's current practice now. It's just being stated here, since we're removing some of those older parts. In the next subsection, we're just updating language to use paraprofessional instead of teaching assistants. And, let's see here, I'm trying to look for substantial changes here. Most of this is just updated wording throughout, and changes for renumbering. When we get to Section 9 on Facilities and Transportation, we add a couple of things about the routines during arrival and departure, making sure that children are supervised by a school employee, and that if they are transported by the district, which is still an option, that that release would be hand-to-hand for safety reasons. And then at the end, Section 10, we've changed just a little bit, make it a little easier for districts to track here. It was always a part of it that they would track, as part of their program evaluation, they would track the success of participating children as they progress through the primary school program. And we've changed it to tracking the growth as they enter the primary school program. And then we've got Section 11, which is newly added because of the material incorporated by reference, which is standard language. That's a lot. Are there any questions?
It is a lot, but that it seems to be a very comprehensive job. I'll ask the board, are there questions or comments? Then, Board Members, may I please have a motion to approve the amendment? Oh, I'm sorry, Alonzo.
Sorry. I have two questions. The first one, well, a question and a comment. My comment first is, I do really appreciate the references that I see in this document to providing information in languages other than English. Julie was mentioning before about how essential it is to engage families into this process. When you are not providing that information in their languages, it is very difficult to make that connection, even more difficult to get the necessary information for these programs to run smoothly. So I do really appreciate the several references that you can put in there. I would probably encourage to go even further and ensure that the means in each of, at the local level, are in place to ensure the participation of these families. My other, my question would be, on page 13, line 19, you mentioned about the centers. Is it correct? Yeah, page 13, line 19. Yes. About the centers or areas in the classroom shall include the space for activities, including, I was wondering if, at some point, based on the research that is out there about the cognitive benefits and the social-emotional benefits for kids at these ages, if you have considered adding the possibility of opportunities to learn languages other than English?
Mm-hmm.
I would be happy to share with you some of the research, but as a teacher, married to an early childhood teacher, and now kindergarten teacher, I have seen the benefits of English, of students whose first language is English, being able to understand their peers in the classroom, and how much beneficial that has been to create a positive culture and a space where everybody is welcome, and how each student, they feed from each other in not just learning English, but also learning another language. So is that something that at some point you'll have considered, entertained? Have I talked to you about that?
You want to?
So, good morning.
So, good morning.
So, yeah.
So, yes, so we are looking to push out guidance, and I think within that guidance, we can definitely work with the team to see how we can work with districts in order to incorporate that within centers. So thank you for that question and your comment.
And thank you for that, Alonzo. Board members, again, I'd like to have a motion.
So move.
To, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second to approve amendments to 704 KAR 3410, preschool education programs. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And one more. This time, we're going to look at non-traditional instructional programs. Associate Commissioner Kelly Foster, pardon me, and KDE Policy Advisor Matthew Courtney. This is regarding 701 KAR 5150, non-traditional instructional programs.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you all. We wanted to talk to you a little bit today about the process that we've been through over the last several months to update this regulation. The NTI regulation had not been looked at since it went into effect originally, and so this summer, we established a work group, and the work group had representatives from parents, teachers, principals, central office staff, superintendents, as well as legislators. And the focus of that work group was to review the current NTI regulation and see how we could provide clarity to parents and to communities around that regulation as well as transparency. So we met three times over the summer, and those suggested changes are incorporated into the regulation, and our team has also developed a guidance document that will be shared with school districts once the regulation is final, and this regulation would go into effect for the '26, '27 school year. So at this time, I'll ask Dr. Courtney to walk you through those suggested changes.
Thank you, good morning. You will see throughout the regulation, as with most regulations, there's a bunch of technical amendments. We'll kind of gloss through those and focus on our substantive amendments here today. So we'll start at the top of page two, this is in our definitions section. We have added definitions for continuation of learning, for learning loss, and for district non-traditional instruction contact. So these are terms that fly around a lot in NTI land. We felt like it was time to put a little clarity around what those terms and phrases mean. The next section of substantive changes is on page four. This is where we talk about elements of the non-traditional instruction plan. So this used to be the NTI application years ago. During COVID, it became a plan that all districts submit annually. We're adding two requirements to that plan, so the first is a requirement for the district's plan for collecting and archiving evidence of student learning. So every district has been required to collect student evidence of learning throughout NTI days, but every district does it a little differently, and we found that it's a little opaque for the community and for other stakeholders. So we're requiring them to add that to their plan, as well as the name and contact information for the district's non-traditional instruction contact, again, just as a point of transparency for the community. You'll see at the bottom of page four, we've added a clarification that an improved non-traditional instruction plan is only effective for one school year, so that is submitted annually by the districts, and so they are expected to revisit and resubmit those plans annually. And then, middle of page five, you'll see the last piece working on this plan, is that amendments to the plan shall not be implemented until after it is approved by the department. So all of those plans are reviewed by department staff. This is to prevent plans from being amended today, implemented tomorrow, and amended back on Wednesday, for example, so that those plans do have to go through the full vetting process before amendments can be put into place. Section three deals with documentation, and this is really mostly cleanup language, just documenting that everything goes into the student information system. On page six, this is a pretty substantive change here, dealing with what we consider to be clear evidence of that continuation of learning. In the past, districts were asked to keep examples of student work, lesson plans, or curriculum maps, and we've expanded on that list a little bit, so we've taken curriculum maps off of the list of acceptable documentation, and we've added to that list reports from online learning management systems, examples of student-teacher communication, or other documentation determined appropriate by the district non-traditional instruction contact in consultation with the department. So we've created some flexibility. Some districts are doing some very innovative things around NTI, and we've created an option for them to come to us and say, we would like to keep this kind of documentation based on our innovative model, and so we think that gives some good flexibility here. We've also created a minimum threshold for what, for how much documentation must be maintained, and this is another thing that varies from district to district, and will continue to vary from district to district because districts can go beyond the minimum threshold in a regulation. But we've established a minimum threshold here for students in kindergarten through fifth grade as one piece of clear evidence of student learning for each grade level for reading, math, and one other content area for each non-traditional instructional day. And for students in sixth through 12th grade, one piece of clear evidence of student learning for each grade level in each content area for each non-traditional instructional day. So what that means for the student is that on an NTI day, the student should more or less be taking the same classes. If I'm taking English and band and social studies and math on an NTI day, then I should have work for each of those four classes on that NTI day. What that means for the teacher is that if I teach four sections of freshman English on an NTI day, then I need to keep one piece of documentation for my four sections. One piece covers all four sections. If I teach two sections of freshman English and two sections of sophomore English, then the expectation is I'm keeping two pieces of evidence, one piece for freshman English, one piece for sophomore English. And again, that is a piece for each NTI day, so if you were a single-content teacher, you're going to have a maximum of 10 pieces of evidence that you'll be asked to archive throughout the year. Section four, at the bottom of page six, on to page seven.
Maybe one piece even if I'm teaching four different classes?
Four different sections.
Okay, so I could have that many?
Yes.
10 times 10, okay.
That's right, yeah. So you're gonna, so one piece for each course, if you repeat a course because you have multiple sections, then it's just one piece. The thought being that if you're teaching four sections of freshman English, they're on the same track, you're probably teaching the same lesson, so you don't need a separate piece of evidence for each of those four sections.
Okay.
And again, districts have the discretion to go beyond that if they think that's appropriate based on their curriculum maps and what have you in their district. Okay, so Section four, page six and seven, deals with monitoring. This is really just cleanup language. We've always monitored NTI programs, but it's been a combination of site visits versus desk monitoring, so we've just sort of called all of it monitoring, and there's a little space for some discretion from year to year, based on how many NTI days there are, how many districts are using NTI. It's really a capacity piece for us. We can't physically get to every district for monitoring, so it gives us a little flexibility. And then you'll see a new Section five on page nine, and this section deals with corrective action. So as the result of monitoring, districts may need corrective action. We've, again, always had the authority to do corrective action, but it's been a little opaque on our end, and so we've provided some clarifying language here around what corrective action would look like. A couple of key pieces, so if corrective action is determined as a result of off-site monitoring, or what we often call desk monitoring, then an onsite visit will happen before corrective action, so we're going to take a deeper dive before we would put a district into a corrective action space. And then a follow-up monitoring after the corrective action period, so you would, we would negotiate that corrective action plan, and then, once you exit corrective action, the following year, you would be monitored again to make sure that the changes implemented during the corrective action period have remained in place. So with that, that is all of our substantive changes to this regulation, and we're happy to address some questions.
Thank you so much. Now, it is, I do want to remind the board that these changes have been presented to NSAC as well.
Just really quickly, you've probably thought of it, but I was thinking about being in a district, and the verb is archive. Where do I put this stuff? The teacher keeps it, and if there's an onsite visit?
So each district has their own process. Some districts are doing everything electronically, that's why we've tried to add some flexibility to this, because when NTI first went into effect, it was pretty much paper and pencil packets.
Right.
Until that has evolved over time. So each district has their own process. A lot of the times, we see that the district establishes the process, information is kept at the school level, and then it filters up to the district contact, so if they were chosen for monitoring, we're working directly with the district contact, but they have the flexibility of how to set that up.
And I may have missed it, but how long do I have to archive it for?
That would just be the typical retention.
Records. Rules, okay. Thank you.
I'm going to ask the board, please, for a motion to approve amendments to 701 KAR 5150, non-traditional instructional programs. Is there such a motion?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, thank you. Further question? Yes, how long? I'm sorry, you may have said this, are there a maximum number of days?
10 days, and those are all in statute related back to health and safety.
Okay. I'll call the question. All in favor of approving these amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And I thank you. Thank you so much for a very comprehensive report. Our next item, we'll hear from Dr. Meredith Baxter with the Office of Educator, Licensor, and Effectiveness regarding proposed amendment to 704 KAR 3406, superintendent training and assessment.
And Dr. Robinson, before Dr. Brewer starts, I'm going to recuse myself from the discussion and the vote on this item because my day job at the University of Kentucky Center for Next Generation Leadership often entails training, superintendents and principals and teachers in the field, so I don't want to be engaged in the conversation because, to avoid any appearance of conflict.
Thanks.
And Todd's going to let me know when to come back.
Dr. Brewer?
Are we waiting for Vice Chair Young to leave? Yes, I can go ahead, sir. Okay, thank you, Todd. So what we have for you today is much-needed amendments to the regulation that oversees the superintendent training program. The regulation was actually promulgated in 1994 and has not been amended since that time. However, the statute that authorizes this program was amended in 2014, and that statute does align more closely to the experience that our superintendents currently take part in, and so we wanted to have the regulation be updated so that they are more closely aligned. Go to the next slide. So the expectations for the program as outlined is that within two years of hire, every superintendent would need to complete the training program. The program has three parts. There are training modules, an executive coaching and mentoring opportunity, and then a comprehensive assessment. Next slide. So the training modules, in the original regulation, you'll notice that each of the topics had a specific number of hours, up to a specific set of hours, that the expectation that the training would focus on each of those topics for that amount of time really didn't give a lot of flexibility for the vendor to sort of determine the appropriate timeframe for each of these concepts. And also, the statute expanded the list of components that are required quite significantly. So in the regulation, there's an expected total number of hours, so no less than 42 hours for the entirety of the training modules, up to 72 hours, and that does align with the expectation for 21 hours of ELA credit each year for our administrators, and so within a two-year time period, 42 hours is not an unreasonable ask. You can see on the screen the topics that should be included within those training modules. On the next slide, the executive coaching and mentoring, again, that is something that currently takes place within the superintendent training program that's currently in operation. So each superintendent will be paired with a mentor who has prior experience as a Kentucky superintendent, and they will provide guidance and support to them. Additionally, there is to be an executive coach that will also support the candidates that are in the program, more kind of in that operation and administrative expectations for a superintendent. Next slide. So the comprehensive superintendent assessment is quite different than what is drafted in the regulation. As I said, the regulation had very outdated language that really implied a paper and pencil assessment with a certain passing score. The regulation, as presented to you today, updates that language to allow for performance-based assessments of the superintendents on the particular components contained within the training. And the expectation is that they demonstrate proficiency on each of those topics. They can do this through performance-based projects, portfolios, or capstones, and they can have a collection of work products that they produce to show that proficiency. Next slide. So as we know, some of our superintendents who may be starting for the first time in Kentucky have come to that role with prior experience as a superintendent. Alternatively, many of our superintendents have many, many years of experience as a school building leader, and so we wanted to provide an opportunity for them to show that proficiency without having to complete the associated training module. And so there is an option for them to show that proficiency through their work product and whatever sort of performance-based assessment. However, there is an expectation that the number of hours associated with the topic that they are going to bypass is supplemented through the selection of a different set of trainings, and they have flexibility to determine which topic they want to engage in. So the expectation would be, they would still have at minimum those 42 hours at the conclusion of the two years. Next slide. Upon completion of the two-year training and assessment process, there is an expectation that our superintendents continue to pursue those 21 hours of continuing education. The statute does stipulate that three of those hours need to be in school finance and three hours in ethics, and so that is included in the regulation as well. And that is the regulation. May I answer any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question. All for the changes. One of the things, though, that, because I know that it's been around a while, superintendents coming in, they say, I got 15 years, 13 years, I can understand that. I also used to counsel them and talk to some of them and say, the training is not about being a superintendent, it's about being a superintendent in Kentucky. So I like the finance and I like the ethics, but the other concern that I have, I guess it's not in statute, is the school law portion. I see some superintendents, and they're great out there, and we're not going to get into names, but I also see superintendent names out there that are in trouble for the area of finance and the area of ethics, and the other area of law, which goes back to the other role that you have as EPSB.
Right.
Okay. Is that not a requirement, school law anymore? Because when I took it, I had to get a test. We could test out back then.
That's right.
But you had to pass the test.
And so the ethics and finance are just for the continuing education. So, Cliff, just saying, if we could go back to the slide that has the components, you are exactly right, Dr. Poe, so back a little farther, so kind of, there we go. So those are the components that are required.
Okay, school laws there.
And so school law is on there, and school finance, and it is very explicitly stated, Kentucky school law and Kentucky school finance. So I would imagine, because there is an expectation for the provider of these trainings to work with a group of people to set that proficiency benchmark, I would imagine it would be very difficult for someone out of state to be able to test out of Kentucky school law.
Correct. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure school law was still a concern there.
Yes, absolutely.
So who is the provider or providers for, like, I know KSBA does a lot, the school board members, so who does it for the superintendents?
Currently, the Kentucky Association of School Administrators is the vendor for the currently operating program, but the statute does allow for the department to contract with vendors of their choosing to provide this training. And so that process is determined by the department and the normal solicitation process to select a vendor. So currently, KASA has the contract through the end of...
Since she brought that question up, okay, since, going back to like we just did SAT and ACT, is that an RFP process, or how? and ACT, is that an RFP process or how is that determined?
I'll answer that question. What I've planned to do is, as having that discretion, is to extend the contract one more year with the current provider and then go through the RFP process. And the rationale for that is, I want to see, you know, when we look at what's required, we also want to see what comes out with local accountability with our. So then when we do our RFP, that we want to include all of that in. So then we would go through, after extending one more year with our current provider, we would do a, an RFP process.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, the contract for the current one is up in June, correct?
Correct.
This year?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, board members, may I have a motion to approve the amendments to 704 KAR 3406, Superintendent Training Program and Assessment Process?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Any further question, comment? Then I'll put it, put it to the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you so much. Dr. Brewer, you're going to stay at the table?
I am going to stay.
And we'll ask that Dr. Melissa Deibel join us for an update on educator preparation program literacy numeracy efforts.
Wonderful. We are very excited to bring this update to you. I know this was something that was requested as part of our EPSB, OELE, or OELE, I apologize, KDE joint meeting, where we had a chance to talk about our efforts in educator preparation. We have Dr. Deibel here, who has done an outstanding job leading this work. And so she has prepared some slides and documents that are in your portal to highlight the work that is underway. So with that, I will let Dr. Deibel go through this material, and we're happy to entertain any questions at the conclusion.
Well, good morning, I guess. We're not in afternoon quite yet. So thank you all for this time. If we want to go to the next slide, we have ed prep. So our early literacy group has met for, we're in our third year. We've been very productive during that time, but I don't know that I've come back and given you all an update, so I thought I'd let you know. During our first year, we did some, a self-study and looked at our coursework and made some changes. And then last year, we did a look at across Kentucky where all of those changes were, or all the things that we potentially needed to do. And we kind of set a minimum standard of what we thought early literacy should look like, no matter what ed prep it was that you went through. So kind of what was the baseline that we wanted to make sure everybody had an understanding of that included, you know, the big five early literacy components, along with the different elements of literacy, like progress monitoring and interventions and different things like that. So after looking at our curriculum and then putting together our ideas of what would be the minimum standard, we developed two documents. The Early Literacy Crosswalk. The Crosswalk actually is the big five components of literacy, and it aligns to the Praxis exam as well as resources that we had been given through different vendors, working with the Office of Teaching and Learning, and then things that the ed prep experts have used in their coursework and those sorts of things. And then the continuum of learning, because while we might introduce concepts in one class, the learning actually goes throughout their programs. So there are things that they're introduced to in coursework that then go into field experiences and lead into student teaching and beyond and those sorts of things. So we kind of wanted to give a fuller picture. So the continuum kind of shows how those things are done throughout their programs. This year, then, we've worked with a third-party reviewer who is doing a deep dive and putting together some assessment pieces for each program. And then we are starting to look at assessments and how we can assess our own programs. So what are some things that we can put in place for peer assessments and to continue to ensure that we're doing what is best for students in classrooms? And so.
So, Dr. Deibel, just for the handful of members who weren't here when you had your last update. So as part of the Read to Succeed and now Numeracy Counts work, there were expectations placed upon our educator preparation programs. And the way that the Office of Educator Licenseur and Effectiveness chose to sort of address those expectations was to pull together a voluntary group of faculty members from our institutions across the state, and they created these cohorts where they come together monthly with Dr. Deibel. So we have a literacy group and we have a numeracy group. And they talk through not only the changes occurring at their institutions, but from a statewide lens as well. What are the expectations and hopes that we have for every pre-service educator? And so the work that Dr. Deibel just described is a result of that literacy cohort, of which Holly is a member. And so I just wanted to kind of give that context. So they do meet monthly with Dr. Deibel. And so this is above and beyond the call. So they're doing all of the work, implementing, but they also come together as a group focused on, focusing on best practices and making sure that every Kentucky pre-service educator has the most outstanding experience possible.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Sorry, should have clarified that. So, yeah, so we've created those two resources and have those available across all of the EPPs. They have those to use. If we go to the next slide, we also, as Dr. Brewer said, have a numeracy group. Numeracy has met for two years. And so last year, we were tasked with finding a rubric for observations that could be used before student teaching and then also during the student teaching experience that would focus on math pedagogy and content knowledge and how to have conversations with students that are out in the field practicing and being able to make sure that math instruction is being held to the same standard as literacy. I think that the numeracy folks looked at seven different rubrics. They all brought in different ones. Again, they're all experts in their field, and they brought forward seven different rubrics. They went through all of them. In the fall, we narrowed it down to four. Those four were then taken out into the field and used with student teachers. And then they gathered feedback on many aspects of it. How long did it take to fill out the instrument? Was it user-friendly for everybody? What kind of conversations were generated from those rubrics? And so from there, they were able to narrow down to one tool. So we went the Kentucky Mathematical Innovation Tool, the KMIT. And so this year, that is being implemented across the state of Kentucky in all elementary education programs. They are going to be observed with the KMIT tool. And we've partnered with the Kentucky Center for Mathematics. They have provided some training modules so that ed prep faculty prior to the KMIT training were able to get some foundational knowledge around the math teaching practices and the effective math teaching. Am I saying that correctly? Sorry. And they, and then we had a training with the Kentucky Center for Mathematics on how to use the tool. The Kentucky Center for Mathematics is also holding some open office hours. So as people go into the field and use the tool, if there is any question, they can come back and they have a space to ask for assistance and guidance. And, you know, I guess the feeling behind this tool is that the students would be able to be engaged in real conversation about not just how they're teaching the math, but how students are receiving that. And the conversation was really going to focus on how to improve math instruction, those foundational math instruction pieces. And so then this year, we're actually going to do a deep dive into the curriculum that is being taught across the ed preps in the state of Kentucky. So similar to what literacy did, we're going to look at just, you know, there is a wide range in what ed prep does concerning numeracy, and we've already discovered that. So we're going to do the same thing. We're going to look at what is being taught. How are those pre-service teachers being introduced to these different concepts? And then they're going to develop, again, a baseline of no matter what ed prep you come from, this is the baseline understanding that you'll have concerning numeracy. So, all right? If we'll go to the next one. Assessments has been a big portion of our work. And so in the 2024-2025 school year, we approved revisions to the Praxis Test for Elementary Education majors to align to the Read to Succeed Act. So we have moved from the 5,000 series, which was our four core areas, plus the 5205, which was a reading supplemental test. We took those five tests and we were able to move to, back down to four by introducing the 7,000 series. The 7,000 series Praxis actually combined the English Language Arts with the reading, so it was one test, but the math, social studies and science all remained the same. So they're the same test. And so we made that move this year. Currently, students in the transition period can take either test, so we're not hurting anybody who's already partway through those 5,000 series. They can complete that. We can also move to the 7,000 series if they want one less test. So we'll move on to the next one. High-quality instructional resources has been on our mind, but it was me and all these different cohorts, and I was running out of time on my calendar. We have brought on a new person in the Office of Educator Licenseur and Effectiveness, and Dr. Mike Nelson has extensive background in ed prep work. And so he is now going to be leading our High Quality Instructional Resources group. It had met previous, and then our focus shifted to literacy and numeracy. While we want to continue the work on literacy and numeracy, as I've noted, we also wanted to bring back the High Quality Instructional Resources. This group will focus on, you know, all the other content areas right now and be able to provide them resources to help ensure that education preparation across the state has additional resources, support, things that ensure that we're using best practices regardless of area. So he said a majority of the people that have joined his group are science and social studies, and then noted that music, art and PE also had some people that were a part of that group. The next slide. I think that Chair Snell already noted this, but we do have the EPP spotlight at the EPSB meetings where they will be able to spotlight their innovations and the things that they are doing in their schools. Some of it might be literacy-related. I know Dr. Deegan's talked a lot about the literacy shifts that they've made, not just for the legislation, but just the other things that they've done to try to ensure that their candidates are prepared for classrooms. And so we look forward to having more of those in the EPSB meetings. And I feel like I bumbled my way through that. Sorry. If there's a lot of information, there's all these different groups. So if there are any questions, I did put a copy of the Crosswalk and the Continuum in your information. You're welcome to look at that. They should have live links for some of the resources. Ed prep has really been focused on trying to use open education resources and trying to find resources in the HQIR world where they can teach using the open education resources. It cuts down on textbooks costs and all of those things, as we know, is important for college students. And as someone who was a college freshman, I really appreciate those open education resources, so.
Oh, thank you. That was, I did notice these other resources and appreciate the report. So questions, comments?
I just, I wanted to just say, you know, Melissa has done a really nice job. I think working with higher ed people can be a tricky business, really. You know, I mean, we all feel like we're experts in our field, and to be able to kind of walk that balance between giving us information, but more so like developing the relationships between the universities so that we're sharing more information has been a real key element of that work. I feel like it could have been bad, but it's been really good. And I really appreciate that stance that you take of honoring the expertise in the room. And my other question, well, my first question, is I, you know, I love participating. What is the percentage of higher, of universities that are participating? I really don't know.
So right now, I have 21 of 26 EPPs that have representation in our group. But we have an additional four that, just because of the small numbers of their faculty, didn't feel like they could put someone on all the different things. So they still get the resources through the email. They're still getting the updates, but they don't, they don't necessarily send someone to the meetings. And that's just because some of them have two people on faculty, full-time faculty, and some have three. So they're really small. So to go to my numeracy and my literacy and then HQIR, you know, and their own stuff, it was challenging. But, yeah, and when we started originally, the first year, I think we had 13. So to come up to 21 is really exciting. And of course, I'd love all 26 to be there. And then we have one, one of that 26 is a new ed prep. And so they're going through their accreditation next week, and then hopefully, once they're on full-time, they'll be part of that group as well.
Yes.
I have a question. I was looking at the slide number five, where it says that the group will focus on engaging faculty and staff with expertise in several areas. I wonder if you all have considered at some point adding in here as well professionals from the language world, whether it's word languages or English language development? And I'm thinking because trying to think about a very famous author in the ELD world, Dr. Margot Gottlieb. Her work highlights the importance of recognizing and valuing the diverse linguistic and cultural backgrounds of multilingual learners. And she emphasizes the need for educational practices that are sensitive to and reflective of these backgrounds. Thinking that in our schools, we have more than 50,000 multilingual learners and even a higher number of students whose first language is not English. I was wondering how beneficial you think it could be to involve these professionals in these processes? What, this is coming out of a little bit of concern as well, because in conversations that I have had with teachers in the classrooms, sometimes they don't really know how to connect that. Sometimes they don't, they are not that much aware of the ELD world. So I was wondering if you would be interested in doing such thing? And especially because we are talking about preparing our future professionals, preparing them for the reality that they're going to find in their classrooms, not just, I mean, just basically to prepare them to recognize the multi-literacies that are going to be present in our Kentucky schools.
Yeah, and when we, so when we originally reached out, we reached out to everyone and we took whoever was nominated from the, you know, from the deans and chairs. But one of the things that we did try to emphasize at the beginning were not just the early literacy, but also ELL and special education. And so like for our third-party reviewer, originally, we wanted to look at both populations within the literacy world, but the scope was too big for the money we had. So we had to limit some of that to the legislation. But I will say that that has been ongoing conversations in our group in various ways. We could probably be more pointed, more specific to having involved more people and, you know, welcome those conversations even more. But yes, originally, that was, that was definitely something that we wanted to, wanted to address, and we could certainly reach out and open that door more.
And within the new HQIR group, which is actually having its first meeting this afternoon, that invitation went to deans and chairs, and they were encouraged to nominate any interested faculty members. So it wasn't restricted to those specific content areas. So I imagine we'll have participation from a variety of representatives.
Thank you.
Okay.
So this seems like a very good practice in getting all the, so do you foresee this expanding to or rolling into additional areas like science, since we've talked about science so much?
I would absolutely love that. It's more of a capacity thing. So now that we have an additional person, he's taking on the HQIR. If, I mean, honestly, I'd have a group for everyone. I think science is definitely an area that there's a lot of conversation. And, you know, we could definitely benefit from looking at resources, especially with the limitations of green-rated HQIRs in science. I think it would be a benefit for EPPs to get together and talk about that. And I know that Mike has several science and social studies people that have signed up to be a part of this. And so it could be something that we branch out of. But that's why we thought if we, if we could even just get them all in one room and start the conversation. Because I also have middle and secondary literacy that ask for, they've emailed me, they'd like their own group and be able to talk about middle and secondary literacy. And I was a middle school English teacher, so I have a heart for that, so.
And it's, this is an example of that K-12 higher ed teacher prep component really coming together nicely, because, I mean, we can't do it by ourselves, and it has to be done well. So this is, neither of us could do it by ourselves. So I'm really glad to see that we're benefiting. Nice review, nice update. Thank you very much. Look forward to more. Board members, I'd like now to move to the present. Board members, I'd like now to move to the presentation of the 2025 Kelly Award for Business Education Partnerships. Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair Robinson. The criteria for the Kelly Award includes creating or sustaining strategic partnership between a business and a school or district that leads to improved student outcomes, including, but not limited to, post-secondary success and workforce outcomes, and significant contribution to a school or a district that leads or will likely lead to increased or improved educational opportunities or improved educational, post-secondary, or workforce outcomes for students. Today, the Kentucky Board of Education honors the Indiana-Kentucky-Ohio Regional Council of Carpenters, or IKORCC, as the recipient of the 2025 Kelly Award for Business and Education Partnership. According to their nomination, KDE's Office and Career Technical Education, OCTE, has had a strong partnership with IKORCC since 2013 through the development of the Tech Ready Apprentices for Careers in Kentucky, which is our track program, pre-apprenticeship program, to accelerate opportunities for secondary students into registered apprenticeship programs after they graduate. Hundreds of students have taken advantage of this program and have gone straight into the workforce through IKORCC, earning high wages and high-demand occupations while earning a nationally-recognized credential. IKORCC is OCTE's go-to in representing industry on a variety of topics, because they always answer our call and never expect anything in return. They served on the Steering Committee for Reauthorizing Kentucky's Perkins State Plan, are a member of the state's CTE Advisory Committee, and were Kentucky's representative on modernizing the National Career Cluster Framework. Additionally, they participate in many workforce presentations, championing and challenging other employers to get involved. IKORCC representatives are on a first-name basis with teachers. They give their name and expertise on local advisory committees and are always donating materials and resources. In addition, they host professional development opportunities for teachers, providing hands-on experience and projects multiple times throughout the year. For students, they provide free OSHA training and inspect welds at no cost that leads to a valuable industry certification. As a father of a welder, I appreciate that. One individual in particular deserves special recognition. Outreach specialist Hope Harp has been the driving force behind the collaboration at all levels. Her passion and desire to help youth are very personal and is derived from her wanting others to have an easier path in meeting their career goals. This should go to everyone that works in Kentucky. IKORCC leads by example, and Kentucky's workforce pipeline would drastically benefit if more industry partners invested in schools and students similar to their level. Congratulations to Hope and IKORCC. Hope, if you'd please join us here at the presenter's table up front for a few remarks, and then we'll pose for a photograph. So Hope, is there anything you'd like to say before we get to our work?
A lot of states and the team that you all have in place with Mary Taylor, your leadership, Dr. Hargis, wonderful guys back here that are, are the guys that we work with on a daily basis to help these programs. It is an honor, and thank you all so much. It means the world. And anything we can do, if any of you all needed us for anything, please reach out. We're here for you guys.
What a generous invitation. Thank you.
Dr. Hargis, if you wouldn't mind, we'd like to have you part of the picture also, too, if you wouldn't mind.
Giving them taxpayers. Thank you all.
All right. How wonderful. So did such deserving recognition. Also, deserving is the opportunity to hear an update from the United Champion Schools, pardon me, from Special Olympics Kentucky Senior Director Karen, Karen McHalec Pressley, and representatives from Bullet East High School, Bullet County, and representatives from Westport Middle School in Jefferson County. My goodness.
Good afternoon. I'm Karen McHalec Parsley. I'm the Director of Unified Champion Schools for Special Olympics Kentucky. I hope the materials we provided in advance offered a glimpse of the powerful impact of Special Olympics Unified Champion Schools, also known as UCS. The implementation of the, of the UCS strategy in Kentucky is geographically diverse. We have grown to support over 100 schools spanning 59 school districts and nearly 50 counties. The presence of UCS can be found at every level, from elementary through college, in an urban and rural settings alike. When many hear the words "Special Olympics," they think of two things, individuals with intellectual disabilities and sports. But Special Olympics and UCS are so much more than that. For example, UCS supports everyone, special education and general education teachers and students alike impacting entire school cultures. And it is not only sports. UCS takes a holistic approach through youth leadership, whole-school awareness campaigns, and even STEM activities like robotics. Through the last 18 years, UCS has been heavily researched and provides evidence-based solutions to improve social-emotional skills and even positive academic performance, particularly for those with ADD. To see some of this data, I would direct your attention to the materials we provided in advance. While there is undoubtedly a positive impact on students, there's also evidence of the impact on educators. For example, there is data on the percentage of school liaisons who believe UCS has made a difference for them professionally, such as 92% agreed UCS made them feel more confident working with diverse groups of students. 94% agreed UCS increased collaborative opportunities between them and other educators. And 94% agreed UCS provided professional or career development opportunities. Related to this last point, there is also evidence of the impact of UCS on students considering teaching as a career path. I have personally witnessed former peer partners become special education teachers. UCS continues to be funded on a national level by the U.S. Department of Special Education, and Kentucky receives a portion of those funds. This not only provides direct financial support to schools, but helps us deliver free resources. At Special Olympics, sport will always be at the cornerstone of what we do. And with the help of our partnership with the KHSA, last year, there were over 2,500 unified sport experiences provided to students with and without disabilities. I cannot say enough about the educators and student leaders who are at the forefront, advocating for inclusion in their own schools and inspiring others along the way. As UCS is designed to be student-led, I invite our amazing school representatives to share their experience of being at a unified champion school.
Hi. Thank you for having us today. My name is Emily Gelnett, better known as Miss Emily, and I have the wonderful opportunity to teach sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students at Westport Middle School who have moderate to severe disabilities. We are fortunate to be a unified champion school. I see our picture up there. Since beginning my teaching career, I have jumped all in at every opportunity I have been presented at making Westport an inclusive school. Each day, I not only want to impact my students, but the general education students, too. I'm happy to say we are doing this each and every day. How do I know this? Well, when a peer comes into my classroom and says things like, "This is my favorite class," or "Ollie's my dude," or "How much longer until bocce ball starts?" I know there is an impact being made on them. There's, this is also evident when the school, teachers, counselors, students, everyone, is excited to pledge to be inclusive during our inclusion campaign each March. We proudly display that banner in our hallway for all to see. Teachers high-fiving my students and calling them by name when we see each other, seeing the school participate in Twin Day during Inclusion Spirit Week to show we are more alike than different, or seeing students represent or rep their Special Olympics bracelets are a few ways I know we are making a difference. Participating in bocce and robotics is great. Leading a Westport team for the truck pool is so fun for everyone. Going to the Leadership Summit is incredible for everyone. Hosting a club where students of all abilities get to be together is something amazing. But what's even better, watching true friendships from during, form during all of these events. Watching the Gen Ed students, our peers, maturing right before my eyes and seeing the impact this has on them, not only in the moment, but forever. Jenna and Brandon are perfect examples of this. All because of their journey with UCS, we are here today. Everyone deserves to feel included. Being a unified champion school makes that happen, and it is something I could only hope everyone gets to experience. And now I'm going to let Brandon speak.
Hi, my name is Brandon. I am ninth grade at Heiser High School. I'm starting east at Westport in August of 2024. Westport is a good school. I was on the, this team for people with special needs. Westport Middle is Unified Champion School. The band they do make Westport a place of so-so inclusive. They do robotics, bocce ball, the truck pool, and their leadership is open. The peers help us play with us for the Special Olympics. They do make feel exclusive, and we're having fun. Jenna, who's here today, Sophie, and Katie was my three peers who helped me. Robotics. Competition with them was my favorite. Me and my friends watched the battle together, watching the battle together and cheering on Warhawk and Mohawk. Being a part of the robotics gave me the opportunity to have fun, so-so, and feel like a part of the team. Bocce was a fun, a blast of reason. We prepare for the competition in April. The girl puts us in, deciding to be teammates. At Westport, we put a sign on the wall every year and give a bracelet to the students. And for Westport, who saw us, they cared about the autistic people and make feel, uh, us feel exclusive at the school. That make me feel good. That's what's for one, to be a exclusive space for all the students. I'm glad I was a part of a unified champion school.
Okay, hi, my name is Jenna, and being a part of a unified champion school is very important to me. It taught me leadership skills, kindness, and allowed me to create many amazing friendships and connections. I joined the Dubs at my school in seventh grade, and that's when I went on my first field trip. It was to bocce ball. I had so much fun competing with my teammates. My partner was incredible. His name was Caleb. We ended up getting first place, and that was a great way to start my Special Olympics journey. Then it was eighth grade. We, the first trip I went to in eighth grade was the Inclusion Summit. This one was amazing. A group of 10 went, and we all got paired up with someone and did a bunch of activities talking about ways we can be included at our school. Next, it was robotics, my first time ever going, so I didn't really know what to expect. We competed with other schools and ended up getting third place. Lastly, we went to bocce. Bocce is one of my favorites since it was the first trip I ever went to. It always have a special place in my heart. This time, we were a team of four, and my teammates were Katie, Duncan, and Brandon. We all competed and got third place. At my school, we also did something, it's like banner signing, spirit weeks, and advisory lessons for the whole school. I helped out with the banner signing, giving people bracelets every time they signed pleading to be inclusive. I also loved spirit week and participated in it, showing inclusion throughout the whole school. The advisory lessons were fun, but also a good way for everyone in the school to learn new things about my friends. This is my UCS Special Olympics journey that I love and will always cherish forever. I hope to do some new things in high school to continue being part of an inclusive school.
Good morning. I'm honored to speak with you today. My name is Andrea Smallwood, and I'm an Assistant Principal at Bullet East High School. I want to share what being a UCS school has done for Bullet East. If I had to pick one word to describe our school culture, it would be electric. That energy comes from the deeply inclusive nature of our students. Inclusion isn't just a program at Bullet East. It's who we are. Every student is valued, seen, and celebrated. One of the best examples of this is our adaptive classes. We currently offer four, adaptive PE, musical live, art, and culinary, where students with and without disabilities learn side by side. Every year, more students sign up to be peer mentors than we can accommodate. When we ask why, they say things like, "Because it's fun," "Because I've made new friends." And my personal favorite, "You can't walk out of that class without being happier than when you walked in." Because of this success, we're already planning to add more adaptive classes next year. Many of our teachers are asking to be a part of this work after hearing from their colleagues. Being a unified champion school has also been a catalyst for change. It's helped us grow our own pipeline of teachers. Currently, one of the MSD teachers at Bullet East is a proud Bullet East graduate. At least three of our peer mentors are in college programs right now pursuing MSD teaching degrees, inspired by their experiences in our Project Unify Club. And we're grateful to have Mr. Atkins with us today. He was not a Bullet East graduate, but he was part of an education program in his high school where they partnered seniors with MSD teachers. And Bullet East is the lucky recipient of all his dedication. So yes, the atmosphere at Bullet East is electric, but the legacy, it's transformative. Because of that legacy, we've been honored as a two-time Unified Champion School and selected to represent Team Kentucky at the 2026 USA Games in Minneapolis. Only one unified pair of students and one mentor from each state is chosen for the youth leadership experience, and Bullet East will represent Team Kentucky. I'm honored to serve as the adult mentor with Olivia Pruitt as our athlete. Olivia, can you please stand? Maya Hettler, who is here with us today as the peer. This opportunity is more than a trip. It's a chance to showcase the inclusive spirit of our students and to help lead the national conversation about tru- conversation about true inclusion. I would encourage everyone, every school to create and sustain unified programs. The impact goes far beyond the classroom. It changes lives, shapes futures, and proves that inclusion is not just possible, it's powerful. Before I close, I want to recognize our Project Unify family who's here with us. Guys, can you please stand? They're here to support us today. They are the ones who cheer in the stands, join in our events, and make inclusion a daily reality at Bullitt East. We are grateful for their support. Finally, I'm proud to announce two students who represent the heart of our Project Unify Club. As a unified pair, they've built a meaningful friendship through teamwork and shared experiences. Please welcome Riley Warnicki and Addison Unser, as they share how participating in unified events has impacted their lives and their favorite activities. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Riley Warnicki, and I am a senior at Bullitt East High School. This is, this will be my fourth year being a part of Project Unify. This experience has made a tremendous change in my life. It has taught me how important it is to include all people despite their differences. I hope out in the MSD classes because I enjoy spending time with the students and I like being able to support them through their everyday routines. They motivate me and give me a better image of the world. My favorite event in Project Unify is basketball. The games are so enjoyable and I love how everyone cheers for each other. And it is not just about winning, it's about being together and making sure everyone feels part of the team. What makes Project Unify even more special is how it reaches beyond the classroom and the games and everyday life. It brings teachers, students, and the community together in a way that breaks down barriers. When people come to our events, they get to see how powerful inclusion is firsthand. It changes people's perspective on how teamwork can be seen and all, and that all the people have the ability to do whatever they want to put their minds to. This realization helps people carry acceptance and inclusion into their own lives. Project Unify isn't just a club, it's a movement that helps remind people that despite your circumstances, you have the ability to do great things, and our community is only stronger when we help put each other up. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Addison. I'm happy to speak to you today. I am Project Unify at my school. Project Unify has helped me a lot. I get to know more people. I especially like meeting peers who do not have all the same classes as me. They are really kind and smart. I like spending time with them. My third part of Project Unify is the items we go on. I really liked going to Texas Roadhouse and loved seeing Christmas lights and having fun outing with some pumpkin patch. We took a hayride and picked our own pumpkins. I also enjoyed the park plunge. Every year, last year, Ms. Smallwood and I dressed up as Michael Wiskowski from Mondo's Inc. That was really fun. My favorite peer is Riley. She is very helpful. She also showed me what it means to be a strong girl. I am glad she's my friend. Project Unify makes school better for me. I get to have the fun and try new things and meet amazing people. Thank you for letting me share my story.
And we thank you for bringing your own illustration of inclusion and student success, student aspirations, student goals, and the adult systems and programs that support all of that. We thank you.
Brandon, we need to see what your robot can do. Your robot drives like I do.
Those robots.
It could be more than that, but because we don't want it to fall off the table. But Brandon, did you program it?
What?
Did you program it?
No. See, Ashley did this thing. Did do robot competition for, for middle schools.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much for taking the time to share. Board members, comments?
I just want to recognize that in Kentucky, we have three national banner schools. Bullitt East is here, the original one for Kentucky in 2019, but we also have Haley from Boone County, Ryle High School, and from Jefferson County, Eastern High School. So, um, I love being able to work with Karen and the team and supporting you guys, and you were at the KASA conference in Louisville this summer in front of thousands of people telling you your story. And I'm wondering, Olivia, what's your sport? You're going with Ms. Smallwood, right?
We're the youth leadership.
Oh, the youth leadership side, okay. I thought it was on the Special Olympics side. So Unified Champion Schools, Special Olympics, the work that Special Olympics Kentucky is doing is just bright light everywhere that we go, and you can hear what kind of impact it's having, including on the teacher workforce down the road. So appreciate the chance for you guys to share.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Every time we hear from students, I somehow have this big smile on my face.
Good way to end. And if you haven't had a chance to see all of the attachments in the portal, the way that UCS, um, visualizes their data, makes all of their work really clear, and at the national level, this is always understudied. It's, there's always program evaluation happening, feedback from adults in the community, Gen Ed students, students with disabilities, and then we're gathering all that information all the time. So it's a very, it's a high integrity process around the system.
I'll add to that. It's the beauty of these programs is it's just who we are. It's, it's when you see the students and you talk to them, it's, it's not about going out of their way, it's just who we are. It's, it's what we want. We all want to be a part of, of a, of a whole, and then everybody feels a sense of belonging. And it's, it's amazing. It's really one of those things that I've seen students that are, that try to run away from, maybe want to be a special education teacher, and this says, this is where we need to be. So again, anytime that you have this opportunity to interact, it's just, it's absolutely amazing to see.
And you saw it on display today. One of the things Karen and her team are really intentional about is this is about youth leadership development. It's, Special Olympics has extended well beyond just the competition and the athletic side of the house. So I love to see that kind of culture change that happens at a school like Bullitt East. Thank you.
Well, colleagues, we have had a really busy meeting, very intense, um, meeting, and really a productive one. I thank you. I would now ask the board to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you so much. I'm not gonna ask for questions or debate, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. We are adjourned.